Dive into the six year and since that's really one of the bigger things on the agenda. And then we'll work our way toward the my credit agenda for the other things. So, we talked about revising the six year. I know there were discussions on Thursday about some revenue that we had received that we didn't budget for. And so that's this short little spreadsheet here, one pager. And so, these are the items that we're never really sure how much we're gonna get. And most of the time it's zero or close to that. And so, at the time we budgeted and the end of July was where we gather our numbers. You can see that's the middle column. So you can see that we had received five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of revenue that we had not. Didn't think we were gonna get when we budgeted for twenty-two. We actually used those numbers. And then that first column is kind of between July, the end of July and the end of. Actually, October, just Monday, that's how much more we had received. So we received another about four thousand dollars in unanticipated revenue. So, we already accounted for the these funds next year. So just, so that that's clear. It is an extra that we didn't account for. It's already accounted for in twenty-twenty-two's budget that we submitted. And there there could be more, you know, between now and the end of the year too, I don't know. We can always hope. So with that, unless you have questions, we'll we'll move on to the six year. So I'll let Jeff know, okay, what we what we did, what we did is we went back twenty-two states saying, we can go through twenty-three. This Finn Ridge Road, we talked about that, we got some failing culverts out there. That's why we kept that one on the list. Their concrete culverts, they haul material out there. Out to Bodice's Field. And they haul it all times of the year. That's why those concrete culverts are failing, those will be considered fish passage culverts. Even though I agree, it doesn't make sense, but we have to treat them that way, so that's why the cost. The next projects that has been confirmed, we just got the notice, we did receive that grant.
Yeah, I'd like to slow down this a bit, since they're fish passage culverts, is there any way to get natural resources state funding?
Maybe, there might be, there might be grant opportunity, it's pretty competitive.
I know they did like five of them this year, so.
We can look at there, no, 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 we will look at that, we'll look at that. So, we have it on for twenty-twenty-two.
Keep talking on this.
And then for twenty-three, we will look at different funding, yes, yes, we will definitely always pursue grants if they're available. All twenty-three, our big project is, our big project would be the Glenwood Main Street Bridge. Ultimately, you know, we get flooding and high times in the post office and other places. If we were to lose that bridge, it's a long way around. So that's why we kept, we're moving that forward. And that took place of the Jenkins Creek Bridge, Centerville Town Roads.
So just one quick note on the Glenwood Main Street, that's that's the arterial bridge, it goes right by the post office. So, what happens is there's a lot of debris that comes down through that small creek when when there's high water. And that bridge has really low clearance, it's not, it's very narrow and small, a small bridge. It needs to be bigger, so it can pass that debris. What happens, it builds up and before our guys can get out and start removing the debris from the bridge. It jumps the the channel and runs through town. And so it does need to be fixed.
Did you guys remove Jenkins Bridge?
Yes. Yes, we haven't, we have the roads out at the last year, all the old nines. They're out at the last year and you know, by then things may change and you know, again, we can look at moves. But yeah, all the reconstructions from oh nine's have been. Centerville Town paving, like like we said before, we need to start looking at our towns. Our asphalt is failing in the towns, we need to start doing something about that. And we need to start chipping away, that's of course with our crews. And then we start getting into the design stuff, like I said, Sundale Intersection, that's on there, it needs to be on there. We will not do that unless we can get a grant. You know, it helps the citizens of the county, it is a wash dot intersection. If we can get federal funding or wash dot funding, then we would look at doing that, if not, we wouldn't do it. But I need to keep it on there. To just, so we can write grants for it. Adams Loop Drainage, just like we talked, that's a design project. At them this year, we don't have drainage up at Adams Loop. And they're building into the drainage corridors. So we need to address that. We have the paved roads less than twenty. These are the ones that are asphalt. And a lot of this is development driven. That, you know, we'll be bringing something back from the committee. And we've we've had interest in that before to look at those roads. Cactus Heights Intersection, that's to improve the intersection, that's at Cactus. That's Mill Road in Cactus Heights, we didn't get. Snowdon Road, there's that, that's the biggest, that's our bigger project, that starts the design. Snowdon Road is our highest ADT in this county. That section of Snowdon Road needs to be rebuilt and widened. We're looking at use in long term, it's construction out in twenty-twenty-five. And that's to use our STP dollars for that. But to use STP dollars, there's a lot of strings attached. So it takes a lot of years to do that. That's why I wanted, we wanted to start it in twenty-two. We actually proposed starting to design in twenty-two, because you need about three years to get through all the permitting and everything else. Thank goodness, that's not in the gorge commission area. I don't know, it's not, because we cut it off, I think, right before. It's not.
Just go to the board and it'll be done.
Eventually, somebody will have to tackle that, but you know, I don't know what the ADT on that is, it's probably in excess of three thousand vehicles now. And a lot of development up there. And we, you know, if you've driven that road, I'm sure most, I'm sure Jake has. It's dark through some of those corners. And we don't have right of way, that'd be part of that project, widen that road, put a shoulder on it, make it look.
So this up Lock Hill.
Yes, Lock Hills. Yeah, where we stopped up to, there's a private road right at the top before you, right before you get to the power lines.
Yep.
That's where we would end. Okay. And then we have our Sundale Old Highway Eight Road, that's still designed in Pickleton Highway Design. If we go to twenty-four, the big project on that is the Sundale Old Highway Eight Project. That is RAP funded, we have three point two million from RAP, from GRAP, from the state for that. That we were successful doing. We've heard a lot about, it's, that area has grown due to the vineyards, a lot of that stuff has changed. That's why we applied for that, and it's also a connection that gets us back around. We're very high for RAP funding. Adams Loop Drainage, that is the construction part of that. So, and that will be done with our crews, Pickleton Highway, that's also the construction part, we're gonna do it in two years. Our crews will do it, what they'll do is they'll take it to a point, we'll take off the S, we'll take off the BST surface. Do some widening, build the base, a little bit of widening, build the base out and re-ship seal it. You know, again, we have a creek there, and so, that's the, that's the cost of it. Sundale Road. Intersection, we've talked about, Snowden, again, that's another piece of the design. That's actually starting to look at buying right of way, the right of way up there, as we all know, will not be cheap. Jennings Road Culvert. That's over in Trout Lake, we have some flooding issues there. We need to bring on a consultant, because we don't have the expertise to actually look at the drainage basin. And it protects us also by bringing on a consultant for Jennings Road. We've kicked that down, to be honest, I've heard this before, a lot of these, these projects weren't just put on, they've been on here for a long time, they worked their way up. Jennings frankly's been on here for a long time, if you if you remember, the bridge sits about this high off the road. And because it it's pounded into concrete, but the channel also meanders around the backside of it. So, you know, we need to look at, but if we open that, what's gonna be the downstream? Ramifications of that, we don't want to open that and then flood everybody out downstream. We need a hydrologist to look at that.
So when it floods in there, it's because of the assault shelves, the water runs on top of that ground and through all the holes. The lava tubes and everything else that's there and it, so when you change things out there. You have to be really careful that you don't negatively impact somebody else. And so that, there's kind of a base and study to look at the impacts of changing the road and putting a different kind of bridge in there. So, with greater capacity, how does that affect that whole area?
Is it usually back up there, on the back side of that, right now?
Yes, and yes, it floods, yeah. We've seen it, well, the last time I remember, we went up there, we told, I told him, don't drive through there, it's not a good idea, you went through there anyway, what he made, or thank goodness. But the water was probably right about the lower door level, not a regular car in the road. And that's not uncommon when we get it back.
Creek only flows when it's real wet.
Yes, it does, yes. Okay, we talked about Cactus, the paved roads again. Did put Latticus Bridge on, it's out at twenty-four, we have quite a few bridges. I think that's the, that we need to, that we need to start looking at. There's the Mount Adams Bridge. There's the Latticus Bridge, Jenkins Creek Bridge. Northwest, Northwest Lake Tim, Northwest Lake, the superstructure at Northwest Lake, the Byerland Bridge, there's a few of them. I just put that on there as a placeholder, I think that has the least amount of opportunity for us to get a grant, a federal grant for. And it's out at twenty-four, we can reevaluate which bridge needs to be there at that time.
So that is, one of my questions is, is that I'm not seeing here a lot, like you're thinking the bridges and those reconstructs. Are we applying for federal grants for these other ones that you think we have a higher chance of?
We'll apply for for the bridges, the reconstructs on the roads, the all the other ones that we've talked about, they're not eligible for any grant dollars.
But as long as the bridge is a certain length.
A certain length, they'll be eligible.
Twenty foot or longer.
Yeah, they have to be in pretty rough shape, though.
Yeah, they, unless they get more funding in the program.
Yeah.
It's it's tough.
What was the top, the cost of a Cactus Bridge redo, do you remember?
One, two?
One, two, two.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're they're expensive.
Yeah, so the the substructure on Northwestern Lake Bridge was rebuilt when they took the dam out. And so it's great substructure, but the top, the walkways and the and the railing, they're they're concrete and they they're just old and they're crumbling. And that needs to be replaced, I think we probably stand a good chance to get RAP funding, federal funding for that, that project. For this, to rehab the superstructure. But some of the other ones, they have to be really bad in order to get funding, so. We'll keep an eye on it and whatever pot of money and our consultancies is a possibility for funding. We'll go after it.
Yeah. Try to get them funded whichever one we can, whether, you know, whatever we think will win.
Is the Finn Ridge Road culverts, is that complaints that you're getting for that, or what?
No, it's our guys.
What is, so we've seen it, we have a problem with it.
If you go out there, hate say.
Well, I have, I've just never looked.
Oh, and I. Where if you try, there's a cone sitting right there. Over the corner of the road, that's because, hate say, it's because there's a hole there, because the culvert has collapsed. And eventually, that's gonna transition out into the road. Because it's an old concrete culvert.
Is it on the north side of the?
Yeah, you'll see the cone. And you can look down and see where the, where you'll see the, where the end of the culvert has collapsed. And when they pull in with those heavy trucks, and they come in all the time. Because they have an agreement with, you know, they're holding, pulling, you know, waste. And so they bring those in and they, you can see where they're turning in, because they're tracking, and they're starting to break up those roads.
First pipe actually has failed, we replaced it temporarily, but we have an agreement with Fish and Wildlife, we have to come back and fix that as a fish passage. So the one that's right off of Simcoe Mountain Road, there's, I think, maybe two in there.
There is, yeah.
Those are all temporary, because the first one did collapse, we had to do some repair real quick for the winner. And it has sat longer than we were hoping it'd sit.
Okay, I'll speed things up, just for the, I think of other things. And twenty-five, like I said, that's the Snowden project. That would be our STP terms, where we borrow ahead, and that that comes up about the timeframe for that. Pickleton Highway Widening, it's there, that's the second phase done with our crews. Lower Spring Creek, again, it's a federal grant, Lower Spring Creek has a lot of other things, I don't know, Jake, if you've heard about some of the stuff. They're talking that, you know, we got approached by. A investment group to actually fund that project. If the tribe did their piece. Because it's worth a lot of money to people for credits, Wetland Banking and Bank, Wetland Banking and. And Salmon Habitat Bank.
Who approached this?
I can't remember the name of the group now, not too long ago. They came through Natural Resources. And so we got together with the tribe, had a conversation, the tribe is trying to, they're gonna try to purchase or do that piece of property.
The Kelly property?
Yes. Which, once that's done, evidently, that's worth a lot of money, because they could, the consultant representing the investment group. Did not even blink an eye about they'll pay for the project. So I don't know, you know, what the value of it is, and they were very tight lipped about that, but there's money in Wetland Banking.
Apparently, a lot of money.
Apparently, a lot of money.
Usually, the problem, though, is in order to create the bank, it costs a lot more money just to do your baseline studies and everything. Before you can create the credits and all that, and that's really small, I mean, usually those wetland banks are down on the Columbia, you know, they're. Like two or three thousand acres big that they're redoing and then, and it's years and years before you can sell one, that's that's pretty incredible.
Yeah, I was shocked.
Wetland there to make that work.
Wetland and Salmon Habitat Bank. Because we're moving, you think about what we're doing, we're moving the road out of that complete wetland, because that road floods every year, because it's sitting, you know. Basically, through the wetland, we're putting it up on top of the hill. They were very, again, they came to us, I was shocked, I didn't think it was worth that much either, because I thought there were so many. But they're working with NIMs.
And they're willing to come up with the funds to pay for the bridge.
If, if the tribe's property goes, the tribe's property has to go, because I think then they open up a huge area downstream for salmon habitat. So that's what makes it so viable.
Downstream.
Upstream, upstream, sorry. Upstream, yeah. Because once you take that, if you fix our part, you take the dam out, and you open up that area upstream, so that, I think it's probably the salmon and his boat. But they.
Do you know, did the tribe buy the Kelly's property?
No, that's that's the holdup right now. They didn't want it, they weren't good, at first they talked about buying it, then they decided, they just wanted to leave the part of the pond and create a channel through the dam. And they're still working on it, I don't know what they've done, I haven't talked to David yet over there to see where they are, I'll probably give him a ring just to see. But I'm keeping it on there for that.
Okay.
And that might be, that might.
It might be twenty-fifty, but.
Yeah, it might be.
Pretty much anything that's not twenty-twenty-three may not be here.
It's a malleable situation.
Right, right, so that's there, and I went a little bit too long and explained it, I apologize. Glenwood High, Glenwood Town Roads, again, we need to be chipping away at our town roads. Then we go back into design for Sundale Road. That we're looking, we were very, our grant scored very high, the last time we applied for that. That road is literally coming apart on us. And we were very, we were very high, but essentially, there wasn't enough RAP funding, so they didn't fund anything new at that point in time. There'll be another call coming out soon, and our thought is to apply for that at that time. And so that's why you see the RAP funding associated with that even as back as far as twenty-four. Then we go to twenty-six, that would be the construction, I, again, I have Latticus Road Bridge, it could be a different bridge. But it would be one that would fit in there. Latticus Road Bridge does need to be done, but that's what's in there, we'll actually construct another road. And Cactus Heights that year, that's what we're proposing, and then we have some, we're back with the Sundale Road. And then we're looking at sidewalks and click attack. I think if we tried to get some grant money for that, they gave us a small portion. If there's more money back out in twenty-six, there might be an opportunity to get more money, especially if we have the design sitting on the shelves. It's a small amount to pay for quite a bit of grant funding. And then in twenty-seven, I have the Sundale Road, because that's about when we would get the money, even though we write the grant in twenty-two. Gets awarded in twenty-three, we'd probably get the money in twenty-seven. And the click attack sidewalks, I just put the federal grant at one fifty and five hundred thousand. You know, my hope is that we would be able to get more federal grant money, and we would offset the five hundred thousand with that. And then the East Market Paver, that's the other project on there, and that's in town in Pickleton. Like to get to that little sooner, but that's just how, that's just how the projects work out. And then I left all those old nines on there, you know, things will be different in twenty-seven, you know, and. Those can be replaced next year or anytime, and maybe one moves to the forward, because we have issues or something like that. And that's the six year.
So this is what you're proposing to dig out for for our public comment?
Yes.
This is, I mean, my thoughts are, this is consistent with the direction that you were given a week ago on on Tuesday, I believe on Tuesday. That you built a six year based on that, which is. Not entirely consistent with where the board ended up on Thursday, it's different.
Right.
And so I think, yeah, so I think some discussion is in order. And mostly, it's around the twenty-two. From twenty-three on, this is, you know, that was consistent with the discussion on Thursday as well. So I think that the thing that's in, the discussion needs to be around is twenty-two, as far as the next year's program.
You were on the phone listening to that, right?
Yeah, I did, I got some clarification from Rob, but I really wanted to, you know, not that I trust Rob. But I wanted to hear it from you guys. Again, my estimate, and I know it's a lot of money for the road, but please keep in mind, that isn't, if the bids come in at six point one or six point two. That doesn't mean we all celebrate, because we still have our cost testing and all that stuff, that's all part of this.
I'll be budget ten percent.
Yes.
Of construction cost.
And if we could get a, if you get a contractor, it's all, a lot of it's based on your contractors, honestly, because we don't have any control. Contractor, if you come in, do it in one year, you cut our cost, you cut everybody's cost. If you have a contractor that it doesn't, or we don't get the weather. We get a short winter, and now it has to winter over, we all know how that works.
Right, that just costs money.
Yes.
Or we get shut down because of fire danger in the middle, I mean.
Exactly, there's all, there's all those those things, so I have to prepare for the worst thing and hope for the best.
So first, if we could go back before we kind of get into that, because I think there's, I think I need some clarification on the unbudgeted revenues. Because I am having difficulty, and maybe it's from, so I have, we've had so many versions of so many things, I've tried to keep them, I have them numbered so that I know. So I want to make sure I'm working off of. Because they. This was the twenty-two estimate, which was, which is what you've built your, this one, which was an eight hundred thousand dollar. Contribution from landfill dollars. And it's got all the, you know, the costs and the, and this anticipates using a use of fund balance of. You know, just over three million dollars of road funds in the in the fund balance. So then I. The, so I guess what I need to dig into is your statement about the revenues, the the unbooked revenues were already built into the twenty-two budget. That's the part I need to really understand, because they're, they're not showing up in the numbers. As far as the current, you know, road, the road cash estimates that, you know, were as of, you know, August first, and then it's got the. What's coming in and what's going out and kind of what's left over at the end of the, in December thirty-first is a number.
Yeah, like three million or.
Yeah, so, you know, and that's the number that's plugged into here, but in here, it does not, in fact, it has timber, it has zero over timber deck in those numbers. So that's the part I need to really understand, because it's a half a million dollars of, that makes a big difference, the one way or the other.
So that, so what I gave you is just to talk about cash, so why do we have a pile of cash now?
Right.
And so I tried to kind of explain where that goes, and I had to bring in Courtney, because we were gonna do Courtney this year. So that was an expenditure with that cash that we've been saving.
Right.
So that's why it's there, but it doesn't, if you look at the bottom, you know, we're negative.
Right.
But that's because it doesn't account for all the rest of the revenue, it's just, why do we have so much cash today? Where's it gonna go, what's it gonna be used for?
So the. Okay, first off, that was never a issue with me. Okay. As far as I knew exactly why you've been, you've been saving that cash up for several years for the project, because that was the only one that was gonna work. So, yeah, I, there was no question about me, why you were sitting on a pile of cash, I knew why, because you're gonna spend a big pile of it. Supposed to be this year, but it's next year, next year. Yeah, so. The project had gone this year, we probably wouldn't even be having this discussion.
Probably not.
Correct, yeah.
So, so this. Spreadsheet I handed out, this is those unanticipated revenues. And this goes into then our ending fund balance this year, to be used next year, so that's reflected on that bigger spreadsheet you had. As our ending fund balance to be used, so.
As I understood it, it was, this was unanticipated revenue, we haven't budgeted, didn't budget for it. And then we were looking, as we talked last week, there's a negative balance in that fund. But we have this unanticipated revenue that actually pops it and makes it so it looks like we have three hundred thousand in the fund.
Well, that one spreadsheet, you gotta be careful, it's only to talk about that cash, it's really not what our end fund balance is for the fund. If that makes sense. That spreadsheet that Dave just had that showed, we had a.
Right, this is a cash forecast.
It's a cash forecast, it's not the fund.
So I guess in terms of our. So I guess in terms of our budget for next year, if it all, grass tax is if we only have five hundred thousand dollars available or you know, the landfill dollars, will we be able to do Courtney at what we anticipated for and still have cash in the fund? So that we can start building up for the next project? Can we pull it off or not?
So if we have five hundred thousand dollars, we receive that from landfill funds next year in twenty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's three hundred thousand less than.
Can we find three hundred thousand in your department somewhere to to make this happen is I guess the the question.
My suggestion is we go to bid and see what it comes in at.
Yeah.
And then we'll know.
That's kind of my thinking is let's put it at five hundred and and go from there and reevaluate when we know how.
But the only issue with that is we have to publish a six-year plan that is that balances. And so if unless you're gonna change estimates somewhere, you have to remove three hundred, because you're on the revenue. You know, unless we're just gonna go in on Courtney and just subtract three hundred thousand from the projected project cost and hope, then the then the fund, then the six-year road plan balances as far as otherwise, because we can't show a negative. You know, we can't publish something that we know won't work, if unless we're hoping the number will come in.
Right.
And then if we are, then let's bet that number.
That way it balances and we we discuss once it goes out to bid or if Public Works comes back and says they don't have any petty cash laying around.
I guess what what's hard for me to understand is we were expecting to do Courtney Road this year. And we were not gonna have another five hundred thousand dollars in uh landfill dollars or eight hundred thousand in landfill dollars in order to do it. And so what we've done is we've taken landfill dollars, we've put it into your cash balance so that you could do it, you know, the last few years and you built it up. And we, the money should already be there, right? Because we were expecting to do it this year, unless we weren't gonna be able to pull it off.
We weren't gonna pave, we had to pave it all at once. And I don't know that we anticipated.
No.
The dirt work done.
We, it was a two-year.
Yes, dirt work done in a single season. The next year you pave it, because that you have, there's a paver on the lower end and then the upper end gets paved, which is a small piece. But you won't get good prices unless you combine it.
Which is what we did.
So that was the plan. So that's why it would carry into the next year twenty-two and we'd still need money to finish.
Right.
Now we're hoping that we can get it done in a year.
Yeah.
If we get out early enough, because last, because this year we were late, just delayed getting our permits.
Right.
And so that was a push. So that was the plan that we're not gonna make it. So it's a two-year. Next year, if we get advertised this year, we'll start as soon as there's good weather.
Yes.
Which is a very different than this year would have been.
Exactly. And did we build any inflation in? I mean, is the number, because I, if I'm remembering correctly, the number has gone up.
We built COVID inflation.
Right, into the number and that's part of.
Eighty-dollar barrel oil inflation.
Well, we're hoping that doesn't come, but yes, we built inflation into this number. We look at the estimates all the time and update them as we go. And as we learn more, but yes, the inflation.
Right, because I would not expect uh the numbers that you put in six years out to be
No.
accurate as we get closer.
No.
To the.
They will change.
They will change.
And.
Maybe they'll go down.
Yeah, but that's why you always made the statement that, remember, only this year is funded.
Is funded, right.
Because with things change, just because you're on in twenty-four, doesn't mean you're gonna get built in twenty-four because inflation could hit.
Right. Now it's twenty-six.
I'm sure it will do.
Right, yes, okay.
So I guess back to the question about how do we, how do we show it? I mean, if we, I mean, our estimate's built on real costs. So we know what people are bidding today. And that's how our estimate's built. It's not, you know, that's the data that we use. So I think we, that's how we we've done that for as long as I've been doing this. And so our, we're, and if you look when we open bids, we're so fairly close, usually in the middle.
Okay, so I guess I would say this, what 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 happens when we go to bid and the bid comes back at a hundred and fifty thousand more than your forecast? You're gonna come forward and ask for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finish. My point is, list enough to three right now, and if the bids come in at that, now you ask for four hundred and fifty to finish. If it doesn't, they're not there. So you get the funds when you need the funds, not before the month. That's kind of what I'm.
Yeah, and we 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 only take what we need to do the project. And that's how we do it.
Right, it's just we have to budget.
Yes.
Which we have to set aside.
Yeah, I don't have.
Back, but.
I never, we never spend all the budget. I mean, we just don't spend it if we don't need it.
Right.
Right, but that's, that's.
It's just the authority to do so.
Right.
Right.
And I would prefer to give you the authority later because I don't wanna budget it and then not use it on a year where I might need to use it somewhere else if you don't use it.
So would that be a bud, we'd have to.
A supplement?
But I guess, I don't know, could we award, I'm looking. Without the dollars. Because if you have to do a supplement unless you can rush one in, now you've lost time on the front, on the front end to start.
Which defeats our, didn't have done in a season.
But.
Now you trust me.
Well, I mean theoretically, you know, the bid came in, the lowest bid came in at a hundred thousand more than you're estimating, you don't have the money there, so you would still have to come back and ask for that hundred thousand dollars.
We'd have to come back and we, the awards would have to make a decision on, maybe we don't award, like it, like we could open these and it's a, it's a half a million dollar short. As far as, it could be, I mean, we've seen that before and we would have to make a decision on do we allocate more resources or do we reject all bids and do some uh, you know, value engineering, we used to call it, which is, you know, this, I don't know what you would do. There it's kind of all or nothing.
It wouldn't be tight because grant funding is so such a big part of this and the promises that we made.
Right.
Different people.
Right, and that's all I'm saying is I'm saying if it's, if your estimate comes in over a thousand, a hundred thousand more, you're gonna come back and ask for that. All I'm saying is come back and ask for four to three.
Yeah, or, I mean, in the past when that's happened, we've just not done something else. If it's a small enough amount, we just don't do something else.
Well, that's saying we won't do it.
So I guess where I'm at is is right now with inflation where it's at and with oil where it's currently going, we can be off pretty significantly on Courtney Road. All depends on how busy, hopefully we get out there early enough and people are hungry enough and they're competitive enough and we don't have to worry about it. My personal thought is if we have cash available and we're trying to balance this over the time, I would have no problem pushing off next year's uh nine hundred thousand dollars on the bridge replacement on Bird Creek one more year and burning through some of our cash balance if we have cash in hand and using that on it. Uh but what I do have to do is I do that, you know, the difference between that eight hundred thousand for next year and that five hundred thousand has to be balanced out. And I have taken a pretty big cuts in a lot of places and that three hundred thousand dollars as a use that it needs to be taken to. And so uh as long as the cash is there, you know what I'm saying, in your actual fund, that we can divert some of that nine hundred and push the nine hundred off for the next year. If it's one more year on Bird Creek, well, let's hope that it doesn't blow out, but.
Oh, we would do that in twenty-three.
That's twenty-three.
Right, you're doing it in twenty-three, but you're you're planning on that. And so you have cash always coming in and cash going out, right? And if you're using nine hundred thousand dollars of cash that came in just that year, or if you're using, you know, because you've got a cash balance, as long as your cash balance can survive that and then we can build up and maybe you didn't have the nine hundred sitting there yet, that would go a lot further.
I don't know how I get money, revenue and money from twenty twenty-three to pay for something in twenty twenty-two. I I don't get, I don't see how I could do that. I I I would like to, but I can't, I won't have any money, no cash to do that. And only if we broke it up and did it in two and redid the paving in twenty-three instead of twenty-two, like we're planning.
Well, I guess so in twenty twenty, so so as it's written at eight hundred thousand, right, now in twenty twenty-two, your ending cash balance is gonna be zero? Is that what you're saying, right?
Your fund balance.
I don't have, I don't have the sheet you guys probably do. It's close. It's not a lot.
Yeah, I don't remember what it is.
Yeah.
I think it's on that big spreadsheet that Dave has.
Yeah. I have many, well, this, well, there was.
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
Yeah.
Because.
If there is, yeah.
If if there's three hundred thousand dollars there, available fund balance, the ending balance, then you're not taking it from twenty twenty three, you know, because it's cash, it's available fund balance that you haven't used. Then you're not pulling from here, you're just burning down your cash balance a little bit more that the next year that we can really start rebuilding. I want to get Courtney done. But I also, you know, if I have to pull three hundred thousand, I might be losing three more employees or something somewhere else.
Right, and that's kind of all I'm asking is to reduce the eight to five or the eight hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. Try to make it work with what you have. And if you can't, um then we reevaluate and might have to make some harder decisions to make it happen.
Sure.
And I don't want to make harder decisions ahead of time.
And if you can't though, but I'm saying though, is I have to build the budget for all the other departments using insane though. And we also have, you know, our reserve funds and what we have available there that we've been burning down. And if we need to move three hundred thousand dollars from our, you know, reserves to get the project done, I understand, but I have to build the budget for not just your department, but for all the other departments. And so that's kind of where I'm trying to understand.
Okay. Um, yeah, I don't know if you, it was obvious or not, but I uh we have to, our minimum fund balance is three hundred and thirty, three.
Yeah, depending on what we have for the year.
Pass and trails. And the only reason it dropped is because we just did uh Roosevelt. We're in the process of doing that because it used to go you know, everybody, well, you got a lot of money there. Well, that was Roosevelt. We collected that only for use on Roosevelt.
I have a question about Roosevelt.
Yeah.
Raid, why didn't we not use the overweight fees originally on the initial build when then you came back and asked us to use those fees for an extra two inches?
Because the bids, because the bids came in so so good.
No, we used, we used overweight fees a hundred percent for the whole project.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we had leftovers as.
No, because we were, we had the original spec and the bids came in lower, so there was more money left in the overweight fee. And so we authorized, instead of doing this much, we're gonna do this much because we have enough money in overweight fees. And it's a better investment because it's not.
Oh, yeah.
Cheaper over time.
You're not gonna beat that price.
So no, we didn't use other dollars and then we only did the additional with the overweight, that that project was a hundred percent funded with overweight fees.
It would have been, yeah.
STP dollars.
STP.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, sorry to bypass your question.
Sorry. So I, I don't know if it was on, if it's ob- obvious on that sheet or not, but I, if there are extra dollars, we'll look and and it looks like we come back.
Although one thing, I think the question, and because I don't, even in all your discussions today, on Thursday also, we the third quarter payment, we had to, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we omitted making the second half of the payment for this year. So all of your figures are based on, the figures you gave me, the fund balances are based on anticipating
a million.
Uh five hundred thou, another, the million dollars in twenty-one, and I believe on Thursday, we elected to not.
Yes.
Put that, so that's another part, yes, yes.
But it's made up with.
But it's made up with the done. Unbudgeted, okay, I just want to be sure. Okay.
Yes.
Right. So I just want to confirm though, that that is the that's what's covering that is that there was five hundred thousand of that wasn't in there.
Yes.
Yes.
That's how we're.
There's not an extra half a million dollars.
That's my point, there may be more on unaccounted for revenues next year that when you come to where you think you might need this three hundred thousand next May, you might be looking at your budget going, well, I really don't.
You're right.
Let's allow.
That's true.
And and that's all I'm saying is rather than taking three hundred thousand and setting it aside for you, that you may not use it to where I might have to make harder decisions because I might need that three hundred thousand this year to save from making hard decisions. I'm only asking for you to come back and ask for that and then we can have a discussion whether it's coming out of reserve or with COVID cash or what we're gonna do to finish the project, what we need to make that decision. Versus setting it aside.
And and I'm not disagreeing with that. The only thing I would make is I'm not ever gonna look at that money as this is, there there's capital and there's operations and there are two different groups. I mean, they're not, it's all the same money. But if you're using cap, if you're saving three hundred thousand dollars to save some, as long as it's another capital thing, I'm okay with that because we can private, because I already said I'm I'm kind of doing that now, but I'm not gonna repurpose capital into into operations because operations are ongoing. And then it's, it's like, okay, three hundred thousand dollars bought me, you know, three FTE for a year. What do I do next year?
Air conditioner.
Or, well, no, that I'm willing to, right, that's, that's an actual thing. But as far as.
One offset the other.
Right, that's fine, but. Right, but I'm just saying you're not going to save FTEs with capital dollars unless, because when we, when we start trading maintenance for people, in the long run, it won't work. You have to maintain your stuff. If you, otherwise you're just consuming your infrastructure and in the end, you're still gonna have those, those air conditioning units are still gonna have to get replaced at some point.
Well, it gets more expensive and it does, because anytime, you know, everybody knows when it's an emergency, it's trip, could be double, triple the cost, but the problem, especially with the air conditioning units, we keep using them, I'm fine, but that's a good example, but the the problem with that is it's nine months to get one.
Right.
So if we don't actually replace them before they break, you're a year out. By the time you do the budget supplement, you go out to bid, you do all that, you're a year with somebody with no ventilation in your office.
Right. Yes, sir.
And Jordan, you might know this, is there, is there a chance that the federal transportation bill passes? Some of that money flow into some of these six-year projects or is it different?
Kind of my thinking, we're gonna have a COVID.
They'll be federal dollars and you know, I don't, I don't know where they'll go, what they'll target, but you know, there's a possibility to fund something.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is. Yeah, I would hope bridges, I've heard bridge dollars and. I know the rest of it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Nothing, no, I'm just saying.
I mean, you know, it's we'll do what you want. I just, we want to be, we're trying to be realistic and to not have to come back. I understand that if, you know, if you want to do it this way, that I'm okay with that, you know. We just wanted, we're trying to get a head start on next year and there's a potential delay at some point in time. I I assume if you agreed to do it, we could move forward with award and and contract and all those kinds of things and then in be in the process of supplementing. That's probably how we'd have to do it, so.
Well, yeah, I don't, I I'm not really that concerned about it because we can move relatively quickly if we need to. And it's not like the fun is gonna be broke.
Right.
Because you're, you're.
A lot faster and they're gonna build that whole room.
Right, right. Well, that's true, so.
And so it's not like you're on your last dollar, you know, it happens. And I think, but it is, you know, we're going on faith that we're you know, that we're gonna be good to our word. Or we'll be good to it as far as at the, we're gonna have to make a decision depending on, we'll know when we open bid.
Yeah.
And just like we always do, when bids come in, we don't know, we, it's a guess. And those come in and if it comes in over, then we, and we have to have a discussion about how we're gonna do that. And I guess yeah. So, I think there's gonna be a I think there's bigger policy issues with, you know, and if the, if the bids come in and they're totally out of whack and there's just not, then we're gonna have to have a discussion about what we do. If they're not over by much and we want to have, it it's, I think there is danger if you, when you start sending grants back, that's a bad thing and you are not, that that doesn't mean it's, well, shovel whatever money it takes to make it work. I'm not saying that. But that's a consideration of, because you, you make all these commitments, you go to the, you know, you go to Crab, you go to all the different stuff and you get, you go to. You go to all the different stuff and you get, you go to the legislature, you get all this and then you say, you know, we changed our mind, we don't. And it's the, in the future, when we go and say, wow, we really, we got this thing we want to do and they're like, yeah, you said that about this other thing. That I spent a bunch of favors getting you money for that project and then you changed your mind. You're, I'm kind of done with you. I'm gonna go someplace, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put those resources where I'm actually.
They're gonna get that.
And we, yeah, we think they're gonna get that, right. So that's all, that's my, that's my only concern about all of it. I do, I want to make it as. As sure as we can with any of these in the climate that we're in right now.
We'll adjust, yeah, three, by three hundred thousand and, and see, see what happens. We're all hopeful that it will come in less.
And I'm, I'm gonna use my, my, what extremely limited power I have as a chair. And I, because we do have, we have two former commissioners in the chambers and I want to acknowledge them. And I'm assuming you were here to watch, listen or, or maybe provide some historical context if. And I want to give you time because I think, I think any former commissioner that comes into the change, it's kind of like they do with the legislature where you. You sort of audit, you have for, forever, you get, you get a little, you get a little time. So Commissioner Thayer or former Commissioner Thayer.
Yeah, just one point, it doesn't. It's not the reason I came in, but when you talk about this funding we had with Congress and infrastructure. One thing I think you have to remember and the history has shown in the past. When there's money out there and there's a lot of work going on. Your bids do them.
Right.
So. Just something to keep in mind. The other reason I came in was. I understand the rumors of before cutting the million dollars. Huge mistake. Huge. You can look at me as the guy that instigated that million dollar thing along with some help. Commissioner Fry. And the reason for that was. We, we didn't have any money for rural access roads. And these road hearings back in the day. You cannot relate to the people that used to come into our road hearings. They would fill this room halfway fill that hall. And we decided there had to be something to relieve some of the problems. And the timber companies came in. And the, and the bigger longer now fits and approached us about. Getting something done with their roads so they could haul. Later in the year and earlier in the year. Because they were losing people during the winter time. People go to for their, their employees would go look for jobs. So we sat down with the timber companies. And said. Let's figure out a program of what you really need and what we can do. And we started working on those various roads and there were several of them. And we got most of them done. Which allowed those companies to log later in the year and start earlier in the year and keep their employees. That was huge. I, I guess, I don't understand you're pulling a million dollars if you really truly are thinking of doing that. What, what are you designating that money for?
We, I think the plan right now is to pull some of it and re-design. And that's the, the delta on the, making the payment, so it still would go to capital. It's on the new county services building. So the difference between Dowport wastewater is paid off. Or will be, will be. So it's about five hundred and fifty thou, there's, and there's about a five hundred thousand dollar gap between Pioneer Centers paid off, will be paid off. We're gonna pay that off, pay off the, the last Dowport. And there's about five hundred thousand dollars of additional funding that needs to make that payment. Because we didn't want to stretch the term of the building out past twenty years. And so that, that was the decision. So the, the dollar's gotta come from somewhere. So that was the impetus of even having, starting the discussion.
Very familiar with both of those projects since I was here. We, we did those projects.
Right.
What are your, what's your income off the landfill per year now?
Nine point four million this year.
And you're unwilling to take ten percent of that for something that is probably, I can't think of anything. That is more important for the economy. Of this county. And particularly agriculture and timber. And the safety of the traveling citizens of this.
I'm gonna stop you, Mr. Thayer. Those will be great comments during the budget hearing to have, but. I'm gonna, because I want to be respectful of the auditors next in line. Mr. Or former Commissioner Sizemore, any insights?
Just would. Remind everyone in the room that that million dollars. Of landfill revenue, the county is, and, and there is. Total, there's a little over two million dollars of landfill revenue. That actually, the county has called tax relief. For all the property taxpayers in this county because they use that money. Instead of funneling the property taxes into the loan fund and then the other different departments. That got the other one going from one or two million, whatever that was. So. It looks to me like property tax revenues are going to increase because we're selling the mountain off. You know, two thousand bucks an acre at a time. That's quite a difference than the three hundred dollars an acre that it valued at when it was just supposedly timber ground. We've got solar projects that are permitted and under construction. There's more tax revenues coming in. I, it, it would seem to me the cumulative reserve funds or cash reserves. Would be a better place to pull the five hundred thousand to make your bond obligations. And. This revenue that, and I thank you for your time and thank you, Brendan.
I, I have a short report.
Thank you.
Courtney, just to kind of follow up on the six year, so if we adjust the, the dollars in Courtney. This plan is.
Good.
Good to go out with. Okay, and then we'll get comments and have another opportunity.
And if we could get more time, maybe on Thursday or something, I want to quickly discuss the not capitalist. Hey, I'd like to give the history of Ron Shaw and Dell.
Yeah, we ran out of time, that's.
Yes.
Let's get more time because I'm gonna talk about that too.
Yes. Thank you.
In regards to why we set up. For over, I'm guessing over thirty years. The road department. Version property taxes to fund law and justice. Which. Didn't help with building roads, maintaining roads.
Right, no, that's always, that's always a terrible idea. And I know people, you know, there's many counties in Washington are doing it out of just, I guess, necessity.
There's really no choice.
But it's, it in the long run, it doesn't work. It means you gotta figure it out.
And there's, I know several small counties because serving on the crab board for eight years. I was fortunate to be one of the five commissioners around the state. And also, just for Mr. Chris. Christopher's information, I did spend thirty years in public works over that building, so. I'm pretty familiar with the roads.
Right, and, and I guess, I would assume you're here. Because you were asked to be here. And it's not that I'm opposed to landfill dollars going to public works. But I will say our budget is more than likely a little different than the budget you had when you were here. And the budget Mr. Sizemore had when he was here. And I would invite you both to dig into this budget. See what it is, see what we have to deal with and you will hopefully better understand the situation that we're in. To try to make things well.
Adam Auditor.
I was not. Set your record straight.
Good to see you gentlemen, good to see you.
Good to see you all.
Good morning, Brendan. I couldn't comment. I did not talk to anybody.
So, having the election, as you know. It's been a little tight in our office, but we're making it go. So far, returns are approximately fifteen percent. And I'm sure they'll go up because we're getting mail late in the afternoon, so yesterday's mail this morning came in and we had a large amount, so. I'm sure that's low number, fifteen percent. We're going to delay installation of the new Golden Dale larger box and relocation of the one, of the existing one out here to Centerville until after the general. So I did want to call to the board's attention that statewide, we're receiving the elections. You know, community is receiving a lot of public record requests. We've been received, we've been inundated statewide. Fortunately, we've only gotten a few, but still it's daunting for a small office to get everything they're wanting. A lot of the things they're requesting are copies of the return envelopes, which. None of us really want to give out because it has signatures and phone numbers and whatever. So last night, the Secretary of State did sign. An emergency rule, WAC and RCW, whatever that it, it affects RCW. That prohibits that, the people, if they want to look at them, they can come in and look, but there'll be no cameras, no anything like that.
But can you explain the nature of the request? They wanted the.
Oh, they want everything from all of our seal logs, all of our accountability, they call it the. Tracking of the ballots, so. I'm not gonna go reach out to the post office, I'll have to ask post office for that, but anything we have from when we receive the mail, our logs that we keep. When we receive, how many ballots from what box in the mail and so forth, all of the seal logs that go into the ballot bags. And the ballot boxes to, you know, the seal numbers and require two people in, two people out, all of that. They want all of that.
So this is really about election security?
Yeah, well, and, you know, my gut feeling, which I have nothing to substantiate, is that. I just have a feeling they're headed down the road of trying to discount the validity of vote by mail.
Okay.
Just from some of the questions, I mean, you, you know, I've got one that I postponed until after the general to even reply, it's that long. Anyway, so I was really pleased to hear that the Secretary of State did pass an emergency WAC. We've been, the Auditors Association has been working hand in hand with the Secretary on this. Speaking of the Secretary, this morning she accepted a position with CISA, which is. She'll be basically, there's an article, CNN article, I don't think that brought her, oh, I did, but. She's accepted a position, she'll be one of the lead persons, if not the lead person, because I just had a meeting with us a few minutes before I came down. For election security for the nation. So at this point. And her deputy has taken a position elsewhere because they knew this might be coming. So the governor will have to appoint someone. So it's, it's kind of scary because Kim has gone up through the ranks through the auditors and she's worked as an employee. She's been the county auditor in Thurston and then the Secretary of State for many years, done a rock star job. So that was just announced this morning. Under Finance, SAO audits still incomplete at this point, still working on the investment issues. Same, same old scenario I gave you last month. I did submit a supplemental budget request for purchase of an electronic time and attendance, should say program. But I, the sentence isn't complete, sorry. And I'm being optimistic when approved, this will eliminate the use of paper for all your payroll related functions. Such as time sheets, leaf slips and so forth. It'll all be done electronically and. I know that we'll have to have more discussions about this and the vendor is more than happy to give a presentation to the board if they would like it. I have a copy of that catch chair for you. Almost forgot it and I got home about seven o'clock last night and I got on my laptop and sent Jen an email, but she's not in here at the last second. Like, oh. Licensing, the plate inventory shortages have been improving, so. They are providing more plates, they've gotten their aluminum, they're trying really hard to get everybody's, where it's filled. This hasn't really affected us yet. But those counties that it has, they've issued a bunch of temporaries, which they'll have to follow up with license plates. I don't know how they're doing that to keep track of their customers. So I'm sure glad we're not in that mix of that mess. There are still issues, but it's not a crisis kind of like it was before. So document recording continues to increase. I was advised by staff last Friday that multiple documents for the SBS transfer have gone through. I don't know if she's still receiving any or not yesterday because I was buried in ballots. That's about the best I can put it. That's why I was like getting myself a health request turned in. So overall, nothing new for the BSO. He's going to take a day off on Friday twelfth, so the White Salmon office will be closed. Questions?
What is the NT eight thousand biometric terminal?
Right on the back here. Those are ones where you use a fingerprint, I believe, and they also, I'll have to look at what ones.
Because I'm guessing there's like eight of them, because they're twenty-two, twenty-two ninety a piece for a total of sixteen thousand.
Right, so we went through and there were, I don't remember, I have to look at the detail that I have on my desk. If they're the visual recognition or not, or just the fingerprint, so that one person can't come up to the terminal to, it's like a time clock. To sign in and then also do the same thing for his friend Joe. Or a friend Mary or whatever the case might be.
Like the old basis, oh, yeah, you, you put my time card in.
Right, exactly.
I'll be there, I promise.
So, this implementation would. When they come in, they would attach it to the proper bars codes and job class and so forth. So that, you know, when I, when I would come in, if I was an employee that had to show my time. It would say, oh, that's Brenda, and she goes to the auditor's office, oh, yeah, her time is split between these, you know, so that it would kick out correctly. I see the end of the highlighter, it's better than a red pen, better than a red pen, but that's coming next, I'm sure.
That would be black then.
Okay, so it will save hours and hours of time in my estimation. Right now, we've had an issue with. During COVID especially, we accepted scanned unsigned time sheets. And now we have time sheets coming back in that are signed and Nicole has to go through and check them. and Nicole has to go through and check them from what we paid and what they submitted, and many times, they're submitting something different than what we paid. We are, um, and then we have to go do a payroll correction and so forth. We're at least a year, if not a year and a half behind with filing and with our scanning of time sheets. I, you know, we're just, it's.
Well, that's kind of my question here, when kind of goes off of Jake's, uh, Mr. Anderson's question about seven biometric scanners, you like planning on having them in the hallway on this floor and that floor?
No.
I mean, where are these seven scanners?
So you have White Salmon Shop. Pioneer Center, Glenwood Shop, this is just off the top of my head, the Bicklesden Shop, one at the entry over here, one at, one of the entries here, one in each building, basically.
So one in each building, and when people come in, they will biometric them.
Or, or they can log on to their computer and they can, and sign in that direction. But you have people that are casual employees or employees that do not have computers.
Right.
So, that will accommodate that.
Right, makes sense.
You know, and then they log in and then their time has to be approved by their supervisor and depending on how many layers, it'll go right on up and, and until that final supervisor clicks the okay button, it doesn't come to us for payment. We can see what is out there and we can call people and say, hey, need to, you know, approve your department's time sheet.
That will get rid of these?
Yes.
And how will this enter into if we're gonna look at doing a, you know, bigger system of more expensive?
They integrate, they have a whole list of vendors that they integrate with, and I'm going to talk to IT about sending a sample of our I know they integrate with Kianta because Kiddecast has been on it for years, but, um, they want a certain file from our, our system to make sure. Because I, I said, I know you integrate with Kianta, it is not on here, but Kianta's not one of the more what do you call it, the, I don't wanna be professionally correct and I can't think of the right term, they're not a, they're not one of the more common softwares that are purchased anymore. But they have a whole list and it, it's not a problem.
And then, uh, the other systems that we're looking at buying, do they have the, this integrated into their system?
Well, we haven't looked at any systems yet, but they can be added on to them or it can be dropped. The first was this.
It's a two-year contract kind of thing.
This would be, I think, um, I'm sure there's an escape clause, but, and I haven't seen the, the contract because this is just a quote. But, the first five years, this discount is available that I gave you here through if we commit or sign on by the end of the year. And I would like to get it going sooner than later, I would like to have all the buzz about.
The question to the earlier question, we are, we are, because I'm still. So, we have, you know, at least committed that we're gonna look at a new financial system.
Yes.
So I think the question I would have, so we're, this is time and attendance, are some of the financial systems that we're looking at have this, not this system, but a system?
I do not know that.
And then, because we don't know which one.
That's what.
So I don't want to necessarily pay twice if I'm.
Right.
If I'm buying it towards already an included feature, or you could drop this one out.
We need to have an escape clause that we can get out of this. You know, it's like ninety days or whatever, you know, that, I mean.
Right, that's all I ask for.
Yeah, so, you know.
I don't want to be committed for five years on like if we end up.
I, I, yes.
Which we understand, you know, we're gonna be using Kianta for a couple of years anyway, and so, um, but, you know, in say years, you know, four and five, if the new system has equivalent of this in, we're already paying for it when we drop them.
Yes, that's something I talked to her about and she said that was doable, but she again is a sales rep, so.
Right, everything's doable.
O N M is for, um, those are items that are spent to the benefit of the greater part of the county, that's why your insurance is paid out of there, the bonds, all of that.
But things like this can't be out of that.
It could come out of O N M, but it's still, you know, this is an auditor function, it doesn't really.
I'm, I'm questioning because you have access in your O N M this year, so.
Well. Okay, auditor's O N M, no, no, okay, no. I'm thinking of the auditor's non-departmental, when I speak of that, the auditor's O N M is, or, no, the auditor, yes. I know there's about four hundred thousand dollars in there, I realize that. And that is for retention of documents and preservation of documents and it is a restricted fund. This will not qualify for that, but auditor's non-departmental is what I thought you were talking about to start with, and you did say O N M, but my brain went to non-departmental.
No, it's the restricted fund.
Well, and I get it, I was just thinking documents are documents and time period blocking.
So, anyway.
Trying, so, did you went out and you solicited multiple vendors and this is the best one you found?
I did not, and they are not on the state bid list, but there is this other thing that other counties are using and I can't think of the name of it, I've given it to Dave with the finance committee, I can't remember the name of it. But basically, you go through them and they are, they have whatever, and I need to research it. So, I know, because I said my PA is gonna be all over this because it's not, it's over my threshold to go out for competitive bidding. She said, oh, no, you know, so I haven't looked at that piece of it yet. But that's the same thing we got told about the consultant, remember Dave? Yeah, when I brought that up, so.
Yeah, you can go, you know, it's like a state bid, but it's the other, you can, you can hook on to somebody, somebody has gone through a competitive process, yeah.
It's piggybacking.
You're piggybacking on somebody.
But this is. Huh?
But this company isn't included, correct?
I don't know if there's another county in the state that has done this or another city that has done this that we can piggyback off of, what I said was, they are not on the state bid list. Yeah, okay.
I will say, uh, thank you for looking into it, um, more information would be great, I know.
Oh, yeah. I just realized yesterday.
My, my brain is, the first thing is, is that the biometric terminals, is there a better, cheaper way for us to do that?
Well, that would be something with the presentation that they could give you, and if you wanted, you could have it remotely, she could just send it to you guys. You know, or you guys could log on, but that's what we did, we had a presentation and it was Heather and I and Nicole was out, we didn't realize they're going to hold through a whole presentation and I said, we have to have more people in on this than just us. So, we had one over at IT and there was the, uh, Jeff was involved and Rob and I don't remember who all was there honestly without looking at my calendar invite, but there were, there were numerous people in that and saw the whole presentation, so. I believe Rob was favorable to it, but that would be something you would want to talk to him about, I don't want to speak for him, so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. My basic report was short, this was the bombshell, sorry.
We can't wait to see what the, uh, the discussion is over new financial software.
We're working on that one.
That'll be the next term with whoever's got my seat next time.
Isn't that tomorrow, Wednesday, that, yeah, tomorrow, don't we have a meeting tomorrow?
Oh God, we do.
Yeah, I know. So.
I had, I had, is that, yeah, it is tomorrow.
Two weeks, so that Cory could bring back his proposal.
That is tomorrow.
Oh, no.
I had already.
Did you have other commitments?
No, I don't, it was to not have a commitment.
You were so.
I was so excited about, I, I don't have a commitment, but I forgot I do.
Sorry.
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, actually, I'm, I'm, I.
I think I'm the only one sitting there.
Right. We're by, I'm by, I get to be out of the room, so I could be the bad guy.
There's a question mark there because I didn't know who's actually going to attend.
Yeah, it is. Well, no, I meant this meeting tomorrow. Is not on the calendar.
I.
I think nine o'clock. Is that now?
It's in the afternoon, I think, let me.
Is it in the afternoon? I don't know. Blocked it out because I.
Negotiations are noon.
Noon, right.
Tomorrow.
Finally, I can be available by phone to say no.
I have it at one.
It has Jake's even negotiated from nine AM to eleven PM, so.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna show up and let Rob do the talking.
Yeah.
One o'clock.
One o'clock, okay.
Okay, I'm out of here, thanks.
So maybe I will be here, because I have to be here at one o'clock anyway, I'll probably just come like.
I still enjoy this.
Yeah.
So, sorry for going into your time a little bit.
Mr. Sharon?
Hey, we're logging in.
We're supporting the different. And that's not the pile, you know, there's other piles too, there is the tree right there. That's the tree, and then I have another tree over here, oh, which I brought to talk to Brenda about, but I can't dare. Guide to redistricting. We haven't, I mean, uh. No, 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 I'll go, I'll, I'll talk to her tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, to start out with, there were a total of four thousand two hundred and ninety-one calls for service from the first year to October twenty-third. In addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total of nine hundred and thirty-two, three-two civil paper during the same time period. Second item, I was contacted by a citizen, and I told him I wouldn't. Wanted me to ask Board of County Commissioners if they would consider adopting a resolution, making Trinca Tech County a sanctuary county against mandatory vaccinations. And I said, well, you probably need to contact the board yourself, and he asked if I would, and that's from them. November eleventh, at ten AM, we will be attending the Veterans Day Parade in Goldenale, which is usually a pretty good parade. Chief Civil Clerk, Budget Manager, here in England, will provide the county board of commissioners an update.
I'm listening.
A request and. Also, please refer to Under Sheriff Timison there's attached press release for a life-saving event conducted by first responders over the weekend. Under Sheriff Eric will also give a briefing on all gap and TCSO drug take-back program, which also occurred over the weekend. And attached, I won't read through it all, but attached, you'll have a copy of Chief Gillette, Deputy Herman Knox, jail activity group. And Chief Knox goes in for knee surgery, replacement surgery, today, probably out of surgery by now. And will be off for a couple of weeks. Under Sheriff Neer and Jail Sergeant Doug Gillum will be contacted for the jail. And if it's okay with the board, I'll have Kim join in.
Um, on Sa- Saturday, October twenty-third, uh, from ten AM to two PM, the Drug Enforcement, Drug Enforcement Administration's National Prescription Drug Take-Back Campaign was underway. Clucetet County Sheriff's Office along with the Washington George Action Program partnered up with DEA for this event. We took back approximately a hundred and ten pounds of various drugs, prescription drugs and things of that nature, so it's very successful in that. I've got a press release here that we released yesterday, so on October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, around twelve thirty-seven hours, uh, Clucetet County nine-one operators received a call reporting a fifty-eight-year-old male with heart issues who was on the Clucetet River, south of the Fisher Hill Bridge. The Dallasport medics, as well as volunteers with the Lisle Fire Department responded to the call. At around twelve fifty-five hours, the Dallasport medic arrived and shortly after arriving, requested the Clucetet County Sheriff's Office search and rescue respond with a rope rescue team to assist in accessing the patient. Reserve Deputy Tim Harden and Deputy Eric Basely responded to the call, or responded to assist with the call. Reserve Deputy Harden and Deputy Basely grabbed a transport litter and began making, or working their way down to the patient. Several members of the Lisle Fire Department and the Dallasport medics were able to get to the patient and called for a helicopter to assist in lifting the patient out of the canyon. Due to weather conditions in the canyon, the Washington State Emergency Operations Center advised it was unknown if a helicopter would be able to be deployed. The helicopter was not deployed to the call. Sheriff's Posse Volunteer Matt Marks responded to the scene with a boat capable of navigating the Clucetet River. The patient was loaded into the posse, uh, into Posse Volunteer Marx's boat and the patient was transported to the boat ramp at the Lisle Point. Once at the boat ramp, the patient was tra- was turned over to the Dallasport medics and transported to the hospital for medical care. Sheriff Songer would like to thank all the volunteers and first responders for their assistance in this call. This is a great example of the partnership the Clucetet County Sheriff's Office has with its volunteers and first responders, including the fire departments and ambulance services, working together to respond to emergencies within Clucetet County. Sheriff Songer would like to personally recognize the nine-one operators and Sheriff's Posse Volunteer Matt Marks for their incredible coordinating and heroism in handling this case, great job everyone. I've got two other things.
Just for my own share interest, so it's below Fisher Hill.
Yes.
Where, where, and obviously.
About a hundred, uh, I believe it said about a hundred feet south of the falls itself.
Okay, so right, right.
Very dangerous area, our, our boats would not, uh, reach that.
Would, would, yeah, so obviously must have been upstream of the salt water.
Yeah, he has a, he has a flat bottom boat, uh, he did sustain a little bit of some minor damage to the bottom of his boat. And, uh, you know, we talked with him about that yesterday.
Okay, good, cool.
Um. Mr. Songer, you attended, uh, a community council meeting in Dallasport where we discussed the lowering of speed limits.
Oh, yeah.
On Highway fourteen, uh, I've been working with, um, Frank, I can't remember his name, yeah, yeah, yeah. So him, uh, I did draft a letter of support and I did submit that to the, uh, Washington State Department of Transportation. Sheriff Songer and I met with Nate Hovenhoff, who's the State Patrol Sergeant for this, uh, area. And we discussed, uh, some of the stuff related to that, uh, they're waiting for, uh, some engineering input before, um, Sergeant Hovenhoff kind of provides his, uh, opinion on that, but I did submit that letter and Frank was provided a copy of my letter as well, so. Yesterday, there was a shooting in Boise, Idaho at a shopping mall. It's a little ways away, but some of the information in that shooting is important for everybody in Washington State to know. So, around one fifty PM, uh, there was a report that one person was shot and down, this came into the Boise Police Department. When officers arrived, they saw some of the best description of the suspect. Shortly thereafter, there was an exchange of gunfire that ensued, uh, resulting the officer's injury as well as the suspect being taken into custody. So, this was, um, by reading all the different, uh, reports that I've been able to come up with, uh, it sounds like they get a report of the shooting, they respond there, get a description of the person, the person that they have identified is already leaving the area. Under the new changes in Washington State law, uh, severely limits what we can do. In the past, we would, you know, basically train for this type of scenario, we'd go over and confront that person. We were able to use some type of force to detain that person. Under the new Washington State law, we actually have that probable cause to, uh, arrest that person for a particular crime. In the past, if we had reasonable suspicion that somebody providing is a description of somebody, we identify somebody that matches that description and we go contact that person, we candid, or we were able to detain them in the past, we're not able to do so anymore, so. It is important to understand that, uh, the changes in the laws of Washington State, there are gonna be some serious safety issues, uh, on the public. safety issues, uh, on the public.
So within the packet, I have just a draft of my proposal. Request for proposal. The dates in that draft are just placed. Are just placeholder dates. And we will be updating those, uh, after the PA, um, approves the document. We'll put the actual dates in. Uh, so please don't worry about that. Um. Bottom line, um, we're probably within less than twenty-four hours in sending this over to the prosecuting attorney's office for approval and then sending it on to you for your approval for the body worn camera and, um, integration within our vehicle cameras. It's, uh, outlined on page five as to all of the items that we are requesting. So it should be a very simple process. We've got a grading scale that I believe will be, uh, an easy way for us to make a decision quickly. Once we receive these, um, within this pro- uh, RFP where I've asked, uh, Under Sheriff Neer to be the point person because I will be unavailable, uh, until after Thanksgiving. And so, um, he will take all of the questions and receive all of the proposals when they arrive. Any questions?
Um, with the incorporation of the current watch guard camera system, uh, are other vendors and contractors able to incorporate that in? Or are we, in essence, putting ourselves into a very small select pool that can bid on that if we require a lot?
If they want to give us the new cameras for the, for their system, uh, that's going to be one of the questions that they have to address is will their system work? Do we have to run two systems simultaneous? Uh, until they replace it? So, um, part of this is a information gathering exercise. We're not going into it with the opinion that this is the vendor and we are writing the RFP to meet the vendor. We're writing the RFP to get the information so that we can determine which vendor.
So I just, I just want to make sure that it's not written in a way that other vendors won't go, well, there's nothing we can do. We don't know.
That's, that's, we're meeting this afternoon to make sure that, like, uh, making word corrections so that it doesn't come across that way before it goes to the PA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No, that was my big.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause you want to have a truly competitive.
Competitive where it's not just written for, it's like, oh, we, we really know. So we're just, this is what we're gonna do. Yeah. Okay, good. All right, thanks Karen.
You gentlemen, any other questions?
I, I just have one. Um, I have been attending, um, the, uh, Drug and Alcohol Prevention, the classic, and I know, um, uh, shared, you know, that was all kind of pre-COVID when they're, because they're still only meeting virtually. And so, um, I, they are still having meetings and I was, uh, we had a meeting, um, last Wednesday and it's the once a month thing. And I had, um, I had committed to asking to, um, if yourself or Under Sheriff Neer would could, you know, not, not every month, but maybe once a quarter if someone could attend.
I, I believe I had somebody reach out to me and invite me to some, uh, previously.
Okay.
We'll make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a scheduling conflict on one of the, one of the ones. There's been a couple of.
No, I, I understand completely because I had scheduling conflicts for about a year.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a Lyle, it's Clucetet Lyle. It's a good group and it's been a struggle with the virtual and, uh, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to have interactions with kids if you can't actually interact with them.
Yeah.
And, uh, although I think hopefully that will, we're, you know, we're going to be at an end on that.
In fact, I attached to your packet there that, uh, that organization put out where you can take your drugs.
Right, right. Oh, and yeah, I was going to comment on that. That was good because that is one of the, um, is in the, is in the plan. And the reason they, they especially want some input from Longford, it's the, like, every five years they have to redo their plan and so, um, that's what, that's this year's work project is to, so they want to have interactions with Longford because they were asking a bunch of questions about, well, what do you think? It's like, these are re- I, I know people that deal with this stuff every day. You know who a really good resource would be? It'd be, you know, and I'm also going to reach out to Juvenile because I know they have participated in the past too and it's good. It's like the two things I could, the two groups that I, that can have really, um, accurate can, that have some suggestions about things are you folks in the Juvenile. Yeah, so, and they are, uh, you know, because they have pretty good participation still from the schools and the stuff and so, but that's, they only see one piece of it. And, uh, you know, an old broken down county commissioner doesn't have.
You know, when the next one?
It's, yeah, it's on my calendar. It's always on, it's one Wednesday a month. And you need the date because they're scheduled from now until.
Would you be able to just send me an email or maybe just like a reminder?
Yeah, yeah, but I tell you the date right now as far as the, just so you know. It is on November. November seventeenth, cut five o'clock. And it is five o'clock. I'm constantly, I keep thinking it's at five thirty. I have gone to the last, the last two meetings where I was doing something and I went in to get ready to be, and it, the thing went off that said, oh, your meeting starts in ten minutes. I'm like, okay, filthy, dirty, I'm rolling around out the dirt.
We have a.
So I'm going to turn my camera off.
Yeah, we have a conference that, uh, that week. Um, but I should be able to be back, uh, you know, access to my computer at least by five, so.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, I, I did, I fulfilled my duty. Perfect tasky, so excellent. Okay, great.
Appreciate that. Anything else for?
Gentlemen and ladies. No. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for all your hard work on that, Karen.
Yes, yeah, really. You need a full-time RFP writer.
That they would have to know everything about everything.
Everything about everything.
Like a full-time grant writer. It's like, oh, why can't we just have one of those?
Money. Well, they're all, and their requirements are different.
And money.
And money. Now there's that.
Having worked with a lot of soft money operations, there's nothing more important in terms of money than the grant right.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Because you don't have an operation without.
Without the grant money.
I spread to that when she, when she called me last night, she was telling me about her time card thing. And I'm like, well, have you looked to see if there's any grant money out there? She's like, oh, no. But that's a good idea. The problem is I wouldn't even know how to start doing that. I, I was talking to Jen earlier. I'm like, I wonder how much, I mean, I understand if I'm grabbed, coming way too many strings and they're not worth it. I get it. I, I get it. But they're not all like that. And I wonder how much opportunity we don't have or don't take. Um, it's kind of like Ruby when she starts and gets over there and now we got six hundred grand where the more grants coming in over there than what used to be.
Yeah.
And it makes a big difference. And how many are we not capitalizing on because we don't have any in this county?
Anything else for the good to be?
I, I do.
I'm going to take this link first.
Okay.
She's probably going to mention the same thing. I was going to mention, maybe.
I don't know.
Color copy machine, sir. We need to have a discussion on whether we want to allow uh, color copy machines in the new building, whether we want to uh, transish, transition out of black and white, at least in some departments, or at least one per floor over there. Um, I know, uh, our financial person would like to, uh, make sure she has access to a color copier. I have Rob checking with IT to see what, how that works, how we get out of the, do we have to continue to pay the lease out of black and white if we get a color or will they transition it and extend your contract or how does that work? Rob's checking on those, but it's one of those things that if we're going to do any part of that, it would probably be who does not have to pay twice and not make a move this copier over there and then the whole, we move it out and move the color. Because that's the copier cabinet is moving everything. So, okay, for now, keep that in your head.
So what do you, what do you, I mean, what do you, I, I don't know what we have now versus what.
Well, we've.
We have some, I mean, we have capability, but it's not easy. I know that.
Right, the color copiers in the hallway here at the courthouse.
Right.
Which continues to whatever. The only other ones I heard from is when we were doing our COVID fund stuff. Proposal, what do you want in your department thing? Um, I believe it was building that wanted a El Chepo Office Max four thousand, or a hundred copier to not use all the time, but occasionally. Um, so you might have, you know, that might be cheaper than the fancy machine. Um, and that's fine. Um, I just know that at least, other than that, that is the only person I've heard complaining about a color copier. Other than potentially HR when they get over there. Uh, because they have to print things for new hires and whatnot that, um, is going to need to be colored. I think you might want to at least have one color copier on each floor. You got one in planning. If you put one in commissioners and you have put one in HR, you at least have one at the floor.
Do you have a comment?
Um.
It's in public works, isn't it? Yeah. And I think the, the reluctance in the past was just the cost is that, and, and, uh, you know, although I.
I believe employees, if they're.
The cost of this was all color.
Right, is that you don't, you know, just be respectful as far as, but you know, you know, I have that one on my home. For some reason, it's default is color. And I'm always having to. Before I push print, I change it.
Like Rob said, we can have it set default to black.
Right, right.
Um, so he's going to check in and give us more information. I just think, um, when, do you know when they were planning on doing the color copier move? The copy machine move? Nobody knows. I'll put it as a question for.
No, and the issue potentially too would be because those, the current contracts went through an RFP. And it was a competitive process because it's a big, it's a big number. And it was, and it was competitive where it was got kind of nasty as I recall.
Right, but I'm saying, so you're saying that if you switch one or two copiers from black and white to color?
No, I don't know. No, 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 I don't know. I don't know where we're at in the, like, when we were going to go out anyway.
I think they were coming up on.
On the time to go do it again anyway, I, I believe.
Rob would be the best one to talk to.
Yeah.
I planted a seed, maybe I'll go.
Yeah.
Plant a more in-depth seed at lunch. Hopefully Shelby can give him some information by the end of our day today.
Okay. Yeah, because I'd be curious. I just know that, that it, you're, you're before, we can't just extend what we, I don't, maybe we can't, maybe it's in the current contract. We could and change out some things and do, which I'm, I'm open to that. I just know it's a, it, or it was the last time we did it. It's a, it's a highly competitive, nasty business locally and the.
Well, that's because they're making pay.
Yeah. Well, if somebody else want, you know, that they were definitely fighting with each other. And they, there was, I think we had a challenge in fact, if I'm recalling, because we, we chose and then one of the losers was rattling their saber. I don't know, it's all, it's surprising for the whole thing. It's, it's a lot.
No, I'm saying, how many years was it?
I want to say, I want to say it was a five year, maybe it was only three years.
I don't remember.
I don't remember. You know, you're asking me for time and it seems like, oh, it was just yesterday, but that might have been five years ago. It wouldn't have been more than five.
Cost is insane. I was just curious how long your contract.
It's either three or five or somewhere in between.
I think the one had expired and then we were able to re-enter into a continuation. So.
Or maybe that's what happened. We went out, we went out to bed and we.
Before that?
Then we just extended up extending after we. I don't know. I just remember it got nasty and I got called at home by the losers to say what a piece of work we were.
The gentleman even came in and addressed the whole board.
Was, yeah.
Well, that sounds like a nice company that you really want to work.
We really did want to work with. It's like, really? Do you really think you're helping your case any, but?
In the future.
Yeah, in the future. Yeah, a couple of years, like, oh yeah, I remember you.
I just wanted to kind of cover Thursday for you guys.
Okay.
You do start at nine. Jen kind of wanted to have an introduction and then I did, I had scheduled, um, Public Works, Public Health, Economic Development, the Auditor, the Treasurer and Seniors to come in to address certain questions. And do you guys, I had a lot in only fifteen minutes. Do you think you need more time with Public Works?
Yeah, definitely. Because we didn't even, we didn't even get to their, the.
Public Works is going to need more time. The rest of those that are mine, reality five minutes is probably enough.
I did fifteen just for questions.
Well, I wasn't even going to have Brenda and Greg because I figured they could fill in when we're waiting for somebody else to get in the hot seat. I can do my five minutes there and then.
Okay, so you, you don't want them on the agenda?
It doesn't, they're going to be here anyway. So, yeah, it, it doesn't matter. I just, I would hate to say fifteen minute, fifteen minute, fifteen minute. And then we're killing time for ten minutes in between.
I don't think we will. I think.
They said most of mine are little five-minute deals.
Do you think an hour for Public Works is too long?
I'd like to say yes, but I'm afraid to say that. I think we'll use it.
If we don't, we can just start on the rest of it.
I guess if we put them like right before lunch, then we can, it would burn into our lunch, we burn into our lunch. If we get done, we get done.
So you want Public Works closer to lunch instead of first?
Yeah, because I know they want to go, I'm assuming, because they have, they had, Jeff had a, uh, artifact with him. To talk about the capital.
Yeah, capital, yeah.
The stuff, the reductions. I'm fine with starting with them, but I think, I think we should allot at least forty-five minutes.
Okay, I like that too.
Okay, and if my seatmates, I mean, I can keep us to forty-five minutes if we, you know, if we're done. It's like, you'll, you'll, we only have forty-five minutes, so you know, adjust accordingly.
Works for me.
Well, it sounds like the, the reach change is going to give them the capital budget back.
Well, except that some of it is, possibly as far as for twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Well, they should be getting a big bump from the SCS.
So it should be kind of a non-issue in the short term. Other than we have to authorize the expenditure, even otherwise, it just, it sits in the fund. Because it can't spend money that's not budgeted to be spent, even if it's, because there's fund balance in that capital fund right now. They're not proposing to spend it, nothing.
Right, my problem with the capital fund was not that the money isn't needed or could be used or whatever, but I think we're trying to build the Taj Hall if we don't need to sell the Taj Hall. You know, the two hundred thousand to redo this office space. And if we have some kind of a vote or a say-so in correcting that, um, then we could make budget changes that way. If I have to just pick a number and you have to live with it, then, then that's what I have to do. But if I can say, no, a two hundred is way too much. You know, let's do this, then that fixes the problem without having to.
Well, I suspect seeing what they brought for today, on Thursday, this is what.
Wild hair on my. On my list, but that's something that's same idea. We might have to talk with Juvenile about access to their private bathroom.
Why that's.
Why that's there, but I don't know that he needs to be in here for a five-minute discussion on that. Why that's there, but I don't know that he needs to be in here for a five-minute discussion on that.
Juvenile is out on quarantine at the moment.
Yeah, I understand.
As well as a good part of the road trip.
Yeah. Okay.
Does that work? Like in the winter time, if they're supposed to be driving to Snowpaw, so they quarantine in the Snowpaw by itself?
I kind of wonder about, I, I mean, myself personally, if you are.
Not near other people.
You're not near other people and you're not really gonna interact with any other people. Why do we?
Well, we just got rid of a, the state just got rid of a whole bunch.
I know, I know, and that's, I'm not saying I agree with that, but it's the same thing if I just live. If I'm living in.
I mean, we're gonna have.
Truck by myself.
That's the point is, my point is this winter, we might run into that, so we might want to figure that out.
You should be immune by.
Yeah.
Well, I know I've heard of people having COVID three times now. So.
Did they test positive three times?
It's rumor.
That's crazy.
That's, well, but you said that's the rumor.
As I said, that's why I said rumor, because it's.
Right, right.
As, as with everything.
Right.
Probably been twisted to me.
I do know a family that.
That has a three-time repeater.
Was it over a long period of time or is it just like a? Some people are more susceptible than others.
Well, that's like the three times thing. I don't know, it could have been over the last year and a half. It could have been every six months. I'm kind of curious as how long those antibodies stay in there and nobody's done any science, you know?
Do you have any changes to the Pearson letter?
No, I.
Just wanted to make sure before we sign something.
Yeah.
One of the packets or do you have it separately?
It is in the sign folder.
Yeah.
It's not really noted on your agenda because it will go directly back to the Health Department to obtain the other signatures.
Right.
Because it's from the Board of Health, it's not.
I just need to know which folders.
Yeah, we'll make sure. I would not do that to you.
No, I won't right now.
No, no, just.
Come on, don't be afraid.
Well, yeah, but writing no on a letter like that is rude.
Yeah. I like, a line is better, yeah. A line is better than no.
Yeah. No or nay, or yeah, it's just, it's a little more classy, so that's what it will be.
You're free to line for me.
Now, I think, I think I'm ready for a motion to adjourn for lunch or recess. Have a motion a second to recess for lunch. We'll be back at one o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, we're recessed again. Order, let the record show. Here's our present. We'll start first with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They're gonna make a motion to approve the business agenda that is presented.
You have a motion in the second on the business agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That, I don't believe we have any minutes that we're going to approve today. So that moves us right to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board commissioners on items that are not on the agenda later. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. I will start in chambers, if there is. Go ahead, sir.
Rick Wagner with CESE. Mr. Christopher, you, your email is September twenty-second in which you attacked me with your defamatory libel statements. Violates RCW seven point nine six. I'm demanding a clarification and correction as set forth in RCW seven point nine six. If you refuse to comply with this matter, it will be decided in the courts. I'd like to know what RCW gives you the authorization to recuse yourself from any solar decision. What's your reason for recusing yourself?
When you're done, I will address.
What is the number of the RCW? Now that you refused yourself, if there's any discussion about solar in the chambers, you'll have to leave. Because you can have nothing to do with solar. I'd like to ask you, Mr. Sauter. You stated we have solar ordinances last week on the KLCK radio. Where are they? Are they somewhere, are they somewhere in the?
No.
No, okay. You said that we have setbacks in the CUP. I don't know where those are. You said we must update the comprehensive plan so that we can have solar ordinances. But Muji Limblad sent me the comprehensive plan and there's already language in there for solar. So why do you need to update?
Did you just answer your first question?
No, I don't think so. I'm asking you.
Continue.
You know. You said that we didn't have any ordinances or any word in the language in the comprehensive plan. That's why you needed to update it so we could put solar ordinances. You don't remember that on the radio? Okay. Well, Douglas County, I call there, they have, they have a comprehensive plan and they have renewable energy ordinances written in there, just like ours. That's why they were able to update there. And put in solar ordinances. So why can't we do that here? They have to. abide by the same RCWs, do everything and, and. Douglas County as we do here. I don't understand why that's a big deal. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wagner. Commissioner Christopher in Hobartson.
The floor has a chair.
You can talk, Dan. Nothing to say, huh?
I'll respond later when you relinquish the floor, sir, and sit down.
I don't have to sit down.
You don't? I don't have to respond.
Good.
I'm assuming that concludes your comments.
Well, I just want to know, since he's recused himself, when they talk about solar, does he have to leave the chambers? Mr. Anderson did in the past.
Yes, go ahead.
The reason I recused myself from anything having to do with character solar. Is because it is brought forth a appearance of fairness. That, since the members of CESE have publicly stated. That I have a house in Mobees or Bermuda or some one of those countries paid for by solar. Solar paid for a new boat, solar paid for a new truck. None of those are true, by the way. The citizens of CESE question my ability to make sound judgments. And sound choices since I tend to have a drinking problem. And I wanted to clarify to the people by recusing myself that I don't have a bias. And in accusing myself, I'm removing any bias I might have. That the citizens of CESE think I have, so. That should make you happy.
As to whatever I said on KLCK about solar work, we keep, we keep having. Where we're mincing words over language, exactly. I, I don't remember exactly what I said. But it is that we don't have, we have. We have ways of permitting solar projects in Clickatat County now. We don't have, we do, we obviously do, we have, we have two, we have one under construction and one does. We don't have. Of ordinances that are specific and only for solar projects, I don't believe. I think that if we wanted to have specific ordinances about specifically about solar. We would have to do it with a comprehensive plan update. Whatever I said, that's what I meant. I think that's what I said, but that was also a week ago, so.
What's on the podcast, you can go to the, and listen to it again.
It's, it's fine. I don't think I'm saying. No, no, I'm not saying I don't remember. I'm saying that you are. Yeah, I'm just gonna leave it at that. As to recusal, once someone recuses themselves, I actually don't know the answer to that question is that. Generally, that recusal is about a specific project and they would need to leave. With that project, with the deliberation, when the discussion, there actually isn't a requirement for them, I don't believe, to leave the room, but it is a. It's an appearance of fairness. If, if I have. Say I had a family member that had a project that was coming before the, you know, a subdivision or something that the board had to rule on. I can recuse myself. I'm not required to leave the room, but generally speaking, it's a good idea because even if I get up and go sit out in the audience, you could. It could give the appearance that I'm still kind of in here and my seatmates would be sort of looking to me as far as that I. Might have some opinion on it one way or the other. But again, it's not, I don't believe it would be to the topic in general, otherwise that would be. That would be a bit impractical, I think. Generally, my understanding, it would be project-specific recusal.
But his recusal was a general statement about.
No, he did talk about here, I believe he referenced a specific project.
No.
No.
Again, we can, we can go back and run the.
We can cut hairs all we want. I will guarantee you and bill you, bet you a million dollars that I mentioned character solar, just like I did today.
I thought, and I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Get your facts.
Yeah, let's, let's move on to citizen comment. So I'm gonna go to folks online. Now, I've got one thumbs up from Gabrielle. Okay, Gabrielle Gilbert, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. First of all, thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for coming down to the West End and having a conversation. With constituents. It was very nice to spend time and have those conversations. I want to speak about childcare availability in Clickatat. I want to get specific as I feel, number one, your economic plan that you have posted on your website. For a ten-year strategy, you have to include daycare and childcare in the community. That is an economic issue that affects mothers and fathers in the community. And you cannot have a robust economic recovery unless you have that component. There is a hospital daycare called the Samaritan North Lincoln Hospital. I would ask that just as commissioners have toured solar farms and. Different kinds of businesses, when they've been discussing businesses that they would bring into the county. That you would make an appointment to tour that. We feel that if you've spent fifteen to twenty years. Discussing daycare, that there needs to be a little bit more to show for it. And I'd love to see the emails of conversations about that, any plans that have come up and any of your travel itinerary that is included. Seeing a daycare, seeing the possibility. I agree that you can have a private entity providing daycare. But the situation, at least here in the West End, for White Salmon, is that three home daycares that have been run for decades. They close because of retirement from the people providing it. And so while there can be a private. Aspect to solving the problem, it cannot be solely solved that way and there needs to be buy-in on a. Local state government position so that we can start supplying more daycare for families. And, and it's critical and it does need to show up in an economic plan, at least, you know, a plan that's, that's mapped out for a decade. So, so I'm asking for, I'm asking not for a better PR, I'm actually asking to see results. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. And I feel with the solar, you guys need to sit down with CESE. And possibly start the committee that starts addressing the, the, the actual policies. For the county concerning this. I feel like that this circling around and around and around. As, as the other previous speaker said, splitting hairs. You need to, you need to say, if we need to create these ordinances and create these policies. Then sit down with CESE and start creating them. Because this, the, 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 the lack of trust and goodwill is the back and forth. On some of the petty actions from some of the, from, from some commissioners and it needs to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Your, your time is the last. I'm gonna go to chambers now for citizen comment. Anybody, okay?
It's the old red, Golden Dale. Want to warn Commissioner Christopher about solar. But anyway, Commissioner Sauter, you artfully made comments at the very end of the last session, so I could not respond. But, so I would like to know, where do you get your facts? Apparently it's not from the internet. You don't do your research there. Is it from the developers? You stated that groups across the county, including stakeholders. Had already may, had renewable energy in place before you even took office. So. It's up to you to implement what has already been decided. So does that mean the commissioners take their marching orders from different groups? You said. Groups and stakeholders have, have made the decision already. And you said on the radio, we have ordinances. But they're, they're not solar ordinances. How can something that does not apply to a solo, solar affect solar? And it's very confusing when you say that it doesn't make any difference because we have ordinances. It does make a difference. And you rescinded the moratorium because you said you didn't want to slow down solar companies, but yet you say. They don't even have an application for the, for any solar industrial site. So how could you slow them down when they haven't got any, they haven't even started the process, according to what you said? So, you know, it's just like. I would like to know where we could find out. What steps we have to take to start the ordinance process. Only way I would know is to research information on the internet, but that would, according to you, that would not be factual information. So I'd like you to tell me where I could go to find this information.
You can stay there if you wish, I will. No, no, I'm, I'm gonna, you asked me several questions. I will, I will attempt to answer them. Although I will be cautious in my answers and that's part of, we're talking about splitting hairs, is we all want. Honest, accurate, and you can take me if you wish, it doesn't matter. From, from elected officials, but when you start, you know, this, we constantly keep coming back. You said this, but you're pulling things out of the context of things, or people are either misunderstanding or they're. First off, let's start with. Research stakeholders. When I was referring to stakeholders, I was talking about the economic development. Plan, the strategic plan that Ms. Gilbert was talking about, that was developed with stakeholder. I was one of the stakeholders. I was a commissioner. At the time, but it was a, a group of stakeholders from across the whole county that put that plan together that I am implementing now. So it's not something that my marching orders came from. Somebody, it was the citizens or the ones that gave me my marching orders and that's what I'm implementing. As to, that we keep going back to solar ordinance or not solar, what I'm talking about, we have, we don't have ordinances for every specific. Land use. We have a, that's why it's a comprehensive plan. It's a plan that. Land use. We have a, that's why it's a comprehensive plan. It's a plan that governs uses in general. That can be applied to all kinds of different, like if you wanna have a specific thing, we don't have a specific title to whatever that is. It is the general title. Solar projects are covered under that as well. We have ways of permitting them now. We're doing it now.
Well, if, if uh, you were gonna have a housing development out here. And then somebody decided they were gonna build an industrial warehouse, so they didn't have any. Ordinances or anything for that industrial warehouse, but they could use the same thing as the housing development did, right?
No, no, it's, that's not how it works, is that there are zones that, that these. Projects have to be consistent with the underlying zoning. They are right now. If you're going to change that, that would require an amendment. That's what I've said all along. We keep forgetting that these solar projects. It is a conditioned use. It's allowed in these zones that they're proposing to do them. If we don't want them to be allowed in those zones, you would have to amend the plan. That would take a comp plan update.
So let's just say.
So I'm not, cuz I, I'm not gonna get in a back and forth. This is citizen comment. It is, there's other folks. We can come back to it if nobody else. So I'm gonna go online. And see if there's anybody else that wants to provide citizen comment. I'm not seeing anybody. Either raise your hand, unmute yourself, star six if you're on a phone. I am not seeing anybody. Okay, I'm gonna come back to the room. Is anybody citizen comment that has not already spoke? Go ahead.
Candy, right, just him. Dan, I'm a constituent. I'm gonna talk about solar. So because any what, I don't even have a dog in the fight. My time, they get here, I'll probably be dead at my age, but you don't let, I gotta fight for this country. I gotta fight for this town. You guys have said there, people are talking about night road this and night road that. It's not only there, it's out now, south of town. There's over 900 acres south of town. Where's it gonna stop, guys? Where's that gonna stop? So you're gonna come up, if this gets done, you're gonna come up, Mary Hill grade, you're gonna look out toward Mount Adams. And all you see is the solar panels. There's not gonna be a town. No, it's gonna come here. You can't tell your place. I have 20 acres. It's open. I could put solar panels in. I couldn't do that too much. Not my neighbors. And I sure as hell can't do it for gold. And this, this stuff right here, made in China. So here we go. Everything made in China. I hope to God those solar panels are out there in the oceans someplace and I hope they sink. But you need to listen to us, okay? I know that this is a hard job. I've been in the public for 50 years. But if you don't, can't handle it, get out of it. Resign. Because you, we need you guys to listen to us. It's just not us. Come on. There's hundreds out there listening to this. They're on the radio listening to us, or listening to, that be, listening to them. But they're scared right now because their neighbors have signed up, their relatives have signed up. They're like this right now. They, they're waiting for you guys to help us. It's what they do. Thank you.
I've got Pat Arnold on the. Okay. Online. Pat Arnold, you raised your hand online. Go ahead.
I did. Um, I have two quick comments. I also appreciate very much that Jake came over and we had that conversation last night. Uh, for the benefit of the other two commissioners, I think that the primary message that those of us in the meeting. Had for Jake was that we would like you to see, would like to see you all standing. Very strongly and unequivocally in support of the health department. Um, with uh, in, in every way possible and that. Uh, I mean, there's some other messages, but. The vaccination rate in the county right now is about 43.9% or something like that. It's very, very low. The health department is trying hard. To raise that. They're having clinics. They're doing Facebook posts. Uh, we'd like to see you throw your support. Behind them. The other thing is about the um, economic development plan. Uh, I looked at that a few years ago and um. Uh, in regards to what Gabrielle is telling you, I agree that daycare, childcare should be part of it, but I also like to comment that as with many. County advisory boards, this one is um. Not the leadership roundtable and the project steering committee. Really, there's nobody on either of those groups that represents. The voice of West Side. Uh, what do you wanna call us progressives, whatever. Um. And it would be way better if you would seat people on these boards that don't all. Necessarily agree with each other. If you're going to have good results. And we're going to sort of lower the, the tone and lower the heat in the county. These boards need to include people who will bring points of view that. May not be acceptable to some of you as commissioners, and certainly may not be. In, in tune with other people, but you, you know, you gotta do it. You have to foster. Open discussion between the various points of view that exist in this county. We have to learn to listen to each other and if. If some of us are never on those boards. You're never gonna hear from us and it leaves us frustrated. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. I'm gonna come back in.
376 is on.
I'm gonna come back in the room though first, since we go back and forth.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm coming back to the room for citizen comment. Go ahead.
Susan Kelsey Golden now. And. Jake, did you have a private meeting over on the West Side? And is this in regards to the first meeting that you had as. Um, touted as a town hall open forum? Was this a private meeting now?
I was invited from a group of people who wanted to speak to me, just like I go to any community counselor or anything else.
Okay, so it wasn't a open town hall. It was a private meeting. Okay.
I am, I have stated though, that I will try to host quarterly town hall meetings on the West Side, either via Zoom or. Um, in person, if we can do that safely, that is something that I have said that I will do.
Okay, I appreciate that cuz I was thinking that was a great idea. Um, I, if, in my memory, when I first moved here, that, I saw more of the commissioners um, in evening. Uh, meetings for everyone and a diversity of opinion was there. Um, and so in this environment, I kind of understand why, why I think that hasn't been happening. So I'm in agreement that I would love for um, more public meetings from all commissioners all over the county, if that's possible. Is that a part of your salary when you do things like that? Is, do you? Have those hours a part of your salary? Is that a volunteer meeting on your part?
Uh, we have a base salary and everything we do, uh, we probably make five bucks an hour.
So I'm just trying to figure out if, if you were to go forward with that type of thing throughout the county. That's actually on the county's dollar, even though it may not be a lot. Or is this something that you decide to do outside?
Anymore. We don't get overtime. We don't get anything. It, it does, if we do host a meeting on the West Side. Um, for any different purpose, you know, say a land use design or anything. That usually does end up costing the county more because we have all of our staff that do get overtime, that have to go there and come back. Certain staff members that do sometimes. Um, sometimes they do flex, you know, to get to the meetings, um, but. Um, I mean, we've, the, the commission in the past has had meetings on the West Side over very volatile.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's the same thing when we went, say, on a solar tour.
Yeah.
Uh, the county might have paid gas money to get to and from, but they didn't pay for our time there because that's your initial.
Yeah, for salary, we do whatever.
Right. So I, first of all, I, I understand the time constraints and the salary constraints and a lot of work that you do outside and that. Can I respond more since we had it back?
We, we did.
Okay. So I appreciate all that kind of stuff. I just wanted to be clear. That um, you guys give a lot, whether you're in chambers or out of the chambers. And in the meetings that I've attended, um. When I come or come here, I know that you hear me, that you listen to me. That doesn't, I, my expectation is that you're not going to do what I say. So when I hear that you're not listening to me from other people, I think you are. And uh, so, and I appreciate that. And uh, are you perchance gonna put that information out when you do set up a meeting so that everyone can attend that?
Of course.
I'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna go back online on Zoom.
376 and then Lynn Mason also handling.
Okay, 3776, go ahead.
Hey, good, good day to you. This is Ken McKeon Golden. Commissioner Soder, do you recall when I came to the commissioners meeting, oh, it might have been 10 years ago? And I, I offered up in- information on the hemp industry?
On the, oh, yes.
I gave you information. Remember that?
I do.
Uh, wouldn't that solve our problem? We could keep all these acres of. Excellent agricultural land in agricultural by, by growing hemp instead of covering up, you know, thousands of acres. With solar panels from foreign investors with foreign products. And these farmers don't make more money on an acre of hemp than they'll ever make on an acre of solar panels.
Really?
Good.
So would you guys so kindly maybe look into the hemp industry? That could be an, a product that fits very well into Click-It-Tat County. And it would create lots of jobs. You get, you get biofuels, you get hemp food, you get hemp paper. Uh, you get body care products. It makes uh, fuel. Plastics, anything you can make out of petro- petroleum, you can make out of hemp. And so I wish you would just put this solar, the solar renewable energy project. On hold until you come up with a better plan, like keeping our land agricultural. And these guys, like I say, they'll make a lot more money off of growing hemp than they'll ever make off of solar power.
Kenneth, thank you for calling. This is Commissioner Anderson. Um, we have a, uh, when I was in natural resources department, of course, I looked into hemp. When people started doing it up in northern Washington and its availability and possibility for down here. The one thing about hemp that we find is, is that it has a pretty high water usage. And we don't have the water rights within the valley in order to, to cover all the large-scale acres. Um, hemp isn't very, doesn't do great as a dry land crop in most instances, um, unless it's, you know. On the west side of the state where it's, you get a lot more rain. So.
Would that be up to?
I, I actually did personally look into that.
Well, that would be up to the individual farmer to do, to take care of that problem.
Right. My, my statement was as though that the issue we have in this valley is, is that we don't have the water rights available to do it on a very.
Well, you got blood good, you got Spring Creek, you got the Columbia River, River. How much more water do you need? Uh, you got wells?
The water rights, water rights are a very tricky subject, sir, and the water rights that you see, what you see that it is green is about all you're gonna see that will be green. In that terms, a number.
Well, I think you ought to grow some hemp and I'll, open it up to a new, a new uh, a new industry for Click-It-Tat County. Thank you very much for listening to me. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. McKeon. We are out of time for citizen comment. Um, we.
We kind of went back and.
I would like to say to Mr. Anderson, go out to Box Canyon.
Sir.
And see how much hemp we're growing.
It's not called hemp though.
We still have. Okay, I'll go.
We get a lot of backend.
I know we did, but we, I, I'm gonna. You wanna go ahead?
It's, it's, it's a serious issue. It's, there's nothing funny about it.
Yeah, no, no, there is. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. McKeon, for your comments. I'm gonna take one more in chambers and one more on Zoom. So, Miss Bosque, go ahead. And we have a, we have a packed agenda. I'm sorry.
Okay, I kind of am going off what I've heard here today and also from um. The radio program you, uh, the commissioners participated in last Thursday. And I know everybody's saying we're splitting hairs here. And that's even more disturbing to me cuz this is a big deal. This is a huge deal. This is our. Land and let's get this straight. You work for us, the people. This is.
Ms. Bosque, you're not actually talking about your, do you have a project proposed on your land? Is somebody.
I'm talking about I'm a taxpayer citizen and this land.
So when you're talking about our land, are you talking about your?
Okay, no, let me get this straight. I'm not gonna.
We, we wanna split hairs.
Yeah.
I'll give you more time.
Let's split hairs.
Go ahead, ma'am.
This agricultural land is valuable to Click-It-Tat County. And I don't understand why any of you want to roll in these solar farms. You are being blatant. And shameful in how you've processed this. Mr. Anderson, your conditional use permit is nothing but a ploy. To get these solar farms in place. And when I heard it, I was horrified. The citizens see what we're going through with under campus. And when you talk about litigation, absolutely, you've done nothing but set this up. For our only option is to litigate against our own county who uses our taxpayers' dollars at your endless dispense to come against us. And how's this working with you, with, for you guys, for under campus? Because you've gotten in, in situation with a corporate entity that is now actually suing the county too, as well as our dollars are still. Fighting against you. And yes, your county dollars are paying to fight against its own citizens. And this is what you're paving the road to do with solar. And for you to say that you cannot make solar ordinances and tell you update a comprehensive plan. I believe is a blatant lie to your citizens. You know that is not true. In the comprehensive plan, thank you C's for doing their homework, states that in 2005, I believe, and you can verify it cuz you are the commissioner, that. It states renewable energy. That means at this point, you can write solar ordinances. You do not have to update the comprehensive plan. And I, if I am wrong, prove me wrong. But I believe that's the rules. And rescinding that moratorium, what you sent me was not a finding of facts. What you men found did not find a finding of facts to resend a moratorium to write us ordinances and the citizens spoke, and we spoke in large numbers. You had petitions and you had people in presence. And you had written comments. We asked you to protect this. You still don't do it. You are stalling. So you can get these night road cap conditional use permits in place. And that is a weapon against us. You're setting the stage with recusing yourself. And I'd like to know on what grounds are you gonna recuse yourself to do your duties? As a commissioner. One citizen speaking does not do a fairness of fairness. You have a duty to us and you are paid by us to do your duties. And you, I would like to know what RCW you're gonna recuse yourself on. Stop setting the stage to hurt us. Protect us.
I'm gonna take one last comment online. Ms. Mason, I believe you were next in line.
Thank you for your time and taking my call. Um, I wanted to uh, talk about childcare as well. Um. As a person, as a mom in this county, um, who has a teenager. Uh, I've had to piecemeal childcare together over the years. It's been really challenging. Um, I believe that a lot of people um, are moving here for jobs and lifestyle. Uh, that don't have family here to provide childcare. So this is something that definitely should be uh, in the economic plan and um. And, and, and a topic that we should be talking about regularly. A caller last week talked about. Um, this is not government's um, job to do this, but we do have senior services. Uh, where government is involved. And I believe that we should have something like family services where we're addressing childcare needs. Um, we've had two generations of. We've had two generations of kids waiting for childcare, um, since the, uh, the committee has been talking about this. You know, we need, we need some answers. There's, there's possibilities for public-private partnerships with companies like NC2 or the hospitals. I know MCMC answered their childcare issues many years ago by purchasing a house that's right below the hospital. And they run a very high-quality, excellent program there. In fact, one of my former babysitters grew up going to childcare there while her mom worked at the hospital. That's an excellent model that we can, we can definitely look at. I'd also like to say that the, the lack of women on the Economic Development Committee is glaringly obvious. And that needs to change in order to make sure that these kinds of issues that affect not only women but families gets addressed and gets put on the top of the agenda. I just appreciate you and all your public service that you do. I know that Erin Quinn is presenting this afternoon. And I appreciate her and all of our healthcare professionals that look out for us. Um, thank you for your service and your time.
You, thank you. That will conclude our citizen comment for today. I will move us along now to, uh, public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Our next order of business is a public meeting to consider boundary line adjustment BLA 2021-11. Uh, this is in the Golden Dale area. The applicants are Erin and Sarah, Sarah Lance, Western Pacific Timber. And I'm assuming that Denise is presenting that.
I am.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so boundary line adjustment number BLA 2021-11 is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels 05171952000300 and 05171900000100. The proposed boundary line adjustment is located in the golden vicinity. The applicants are Glance and Western Pacific Timber. I believe that is Erin Glance. The administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health planning departments, including the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve this boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA 2021-11. Applicants Glance and Western Pacific Timber.
Okay. Thank you, Denise. Any questions for?
Does anybody know if this is the Sam Jenkins Bridge of the bridge we were talking about earlier?
No, it is not.
No, that's in, that's in.
That's what I thought that was on the other side.
Apparently we have trouble naming things, so we use our names.
Well, he was very popular.
Yeah.
No question, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment BLA 2021-11, which is on parcel number 05171952-0003/00 and 05-17-1900-00 applying forward slash 00 in the Golden Dale area. Applicants are Erin and Sarah Glance with Western and Pacific Timber being the others.
You have a motion in the second to grant final approval on BLA 2021-11. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. While we're signing, I will move us next. We have a, another public meeting to consider a request for a two-year plat extension of subdivision, SUB 2018-01. Uh, this is in the Golden Dale or Delfport area. The applicant is applicant is Greg Wallace. I assume that you are presenting again, Denise?
Yes. Okay, before you say as a, is a plat extension request for an additional two years in order to complete all conditions of approval for subdivision, SUB 2018-01 Mountain View Estates. The Clickatack County subdivision ordinance and short plat ordinance 122082, section 7.72 states a maximum of a single two-year extension may be granted by the board when applied for in writing at least 30 days prior to the three-year deadline, showing the applicant has attempted in good faith to submit a final plat. The applicant requested a two-year plat extension from the planning department on September 27th, 2021. Work on the project has been hampered due to COVID-19 related issues, including material availability and supply chain disruption. The current plat deadline is November 6th, 2021. If the board feels an extension is warranted, the board will need to make a motion to grant a two-year plat extension, changing the current deadline from November 6th, 2021 to November 6th, 2023 for subdivision, SUB 2018-01 Mountain View Estates, applicant Greg Wallace.
Questions, discussion? This seems, I mean, it's, it's, there's, it's pretty simple. There has been quite a lot of, I mean, it's, the project is well along.
Clarification, they're only allowed one extension? Is that what you read? I thought that this has anything to do with that, just.
Right, yeah.
Do, there have been exceptions made in the.
Probably. I mean, there's any, any timeline probably has a waiver, an extension, an extension to the extension that they opened up.
You might actually have to have a public.
Probably a public hearing. Yeah, it could be, but this is.
Straightforward, he's already got part of the work.
I am.
Mr. Motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, a motion to consider the two-year plat extension of subdivision, SUB 2018-01. Um, and that is to November 26th, 2023. And that's for parcel number 02-13-3375-0015/00 and parcel 02-13-3360-1001/00 that are located in the Delfport area with the applicant being Greg Wallace.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to grant the two-year plat extension. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks Denise. Okay, that gets, and look at that, we're actually a minute ahead somehow. Thank you Denise for being very quick and efficient. Uh, which now brings us to Public Health Director Erin Quinn with the department update and report. Thank you. I have an eye, Steve.
She brought all sorts of stuff.
Yeah.
Well, because you know, I know you guys like color and I can never. Well, and I think it helps just because there's a lot of detail for us. I mean, I need the color.
I like color. It helps bring things out.
Yeah.
Trying to look at data and absorb it and help.
Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to have those because I think it's a little just easier to read. So I'm going to just do some quick clinical update, just department stuff. My chair is thinking.
That one does. We got new chairs.
I just want to make sure I'm only.
Did we get new chairs?
Some of us, these are going to the health department.
Yeah. Well played.
That's fine. We're used to getting, we're used to getting the bottom of the barrel. I just want to make sure that it wasn't just me. Room's moving or I'm moving, I'm not sure. Um, and then David's going to do a quick, uh, update for environmental health. So, um, just, I'm just going to go backwards, I think. So start with COVID. Um, I did the update on Thursday with you all. So you're kind of tracking, we're up to 296 cases this month. So there's a small chance we might hit August's numbers. But we're really hopeful that we're actually going to be under that because we only have, you know, five more days. So we're, um, last week was the lowest number we'd had since the beginning of September. So we'd like really fingers crossed that we're kind of on the down, on the downhill, which is, you know, with most of the rest of the state. Typically, and I can't bet this information, but my personal feeling when I look at data is I'm usually seeing us about two weeks behind what the rest of the state is doing. So kind of when they start to see a downturn, for whatever reason, it takes us about two weeks to catch up. Um, when their numbers go up, we're typically about two weeks behind there too. I can explain that. That's just my sense of, you know, looking at this data every single day. So, I think we're in a good spot. We are up to 42% vaccinated of the total population. Um, so that's exciting. Went up another 0.1% since last week when I saw y'all. Um, we're continuing to give vaccines. We got the, um, approval this, late this morning to start doing the boosters. So that means that, um, you can get your third, your third vaccine for Moderna. Now we've been doing Pfizer booster. So now you can do Moderna if it's been six months and Johnson and Johnson, if it's been two months since your last vaccine. So we're offering those at both offices starting.
Johnson and Johnson, that'll be two months. Wow. Are you supposed to get it every two months with Johnson and Johnson?
That I hope not. No, it's just a one time as of today.
And then you're good for a year.
As of today. You know how sometimes my answers change between months? As I'm always saying, today, yes. Um, so once it's been two months since your original Johnson and Johnson, you can't go ahead and get that second dose. The other two are six months. Um, they are anticipating that they're going to give authorization for five to 11-year-olds, um, within the week. So, we have that to look forward to. Uh, we are going to start leaning a little bit heavily on the, the state has brought their vans. We talked about that. They're going to cut down. Uh, one of the things they're going to do is cover for our clinic. The week of November 8th, we will be moving across the street to our new building. We will not be providing in-person services.
New chair.
It was my new chair. Took some, made chewed the arms off. Um, so it's probably appropriate for me to have it. Uh, eight, so whatever that we give, the eighth and the 12th, uh, we will be closed in-person services. We will still be available by phone if people call. Um, and we will be opening the 15th. We'll start at the new building with our in-person services. So, um, but there will still be vaccinations happening that week, but the state will be kind of helping us with that. So, um, as far as clinical services goes, we are still providing WIC services remotely. That's still their guidance for us to do that. We did get our two breastfeeding peer counselors on board. Um, I think you signed, you, you approved the two contracts and then we offered the position to one and they, they got another compelling offer. So, um, there is a new one in today. We are only getting two, even though that will be the third request that you all see on the consent agenda. Um, and that, that's why that happened.
Clarification, if I can quickly. All those on our consent agenda are grant funded.
Yeah, 100%. Yep. Um, I did list our immunization. So we have tomorrow, the nursing staff's going to be out in Bickleton and Alderdale. Um, next week they will be at the Lyle Food Pantry. And then we have, um, two, two dates where the state's actually going to come in and help. Um, once we're back in the new building, we'll continue to do, just do weekly clinics, um, through our clinic, through our new clinic space, which we're very excited about. Um, actually, I think we're using part of your space. So since you guys aren't quite there yet, so, um, you're used to the front, I think. Um, we're still seeing our family planning clients or practitioners on maternity leave until January. Um, the Connie Clark is covering for us. She's from Skamania County. She's been there as a family planning provider for a really long time. And has really been helpful in just kind of guiding us and kind of where we should be with this program and kind of helping look at some of the things we're doing and how to be more efficient. So that's been, we're very, very grateful for her time and in filling that in. Um, the perinatal mental health grant, we do. So that's the other individuals that you will see on the consent agenda. Um, so they.
I think half the consent agenda is you.
It is, yeah. You're welcome. I know. Every time I think I'm super organized, I have new stuff to send you. So, um, so they, the four support group leaders have been identified. I think in other counties, they had paid them with gift cards and that didn't seem like that was a great idea. So, um, we did do the contract so that we can pay them $50 per week. I think anyway, it's a $20,000 grant and that ends up being $5,200, I think. So that's not, obviously, you're there. But, um, so those are the other ones. So they'll provide, they'll set up and provide support groups for, um, women who are pregnant or recently delivered. Um, and I think that as anyone could say, mental health in this community is, and this county is fairly underserved. And so anything that we can do to help support, I think this is going to be a really, we have some really engaged and excited individuals to kind of head this up. So I think we're going to get some really good, participation. And depending on, uh, how that goes, there are opportunities for more funding to continue the project. So, um, we'll continue to look at that. Uh, we are, I am working on partnering with the city of White Salmon to submit their application for a complete street grant. Um, the application is due at the end of the month. And then I think in March, they'll find out, um, if they get the, that, and that will allow for a lot of, um, street improvements. And they look at things like access to healthcare and, um, the health of a community and that sort of thing. So we've been working, I've been partnering with the city of White Salmon, um, to get that application. And we did that once in 2011, I believe. Um, and I don't know if you're, uh, I don't remember the name of the street, but they have all the nice sidewalk improvements they put in in White Salmon that actually go up to Washington from the post office there.
Healthy, whatever, whatever.
Yeah.
Safe routes to.
Yeah, they did the safe routes to school. They got the crosswalks with the lights. Um, anyway, sorry, I don't know my streets very well. I can tell you how to get there, but I can't tell you the name of the street. Um, so they did have all those improvements. I think they got around $250,000 initially in 2011. Um, and so kind of trying to put together a plan that they would either get kind of equal or more, um, funding this time. So, uh, really excited to be doing something, you know, that kind of community building that is outside of COVID because sometimes it's nice to do things in our COVID. Um, and then the other, we're moving. And then I need, I would like to get verbal approval to have, uh, to fill the position for a business manager. Uh, we've talked about that before. So, we initially, when we looked at our business practices and identified that when I, when I came on as a, as a director, we identified that there were some concerns with how things had been done. So we tried to fix that internally. That didn't quite work out. We really felt like we needed, um, an additional skill set. So for the last year, we've been contracting with a CPA's office that's been, I can't even tell you how incredible of work they've done for us and where they've gotten us. But I think, I know that, that we need to continue to have that kind of skill set in order to maintain these grants that we're going to get. The, are going to have continually increase in complexity and requirements. Because unless you follow the compliant or unless you're compliant with these grants, you don't get more. And I think the more we're looking at, uh, funding being a challenge, if we can't manage our finances and kind of, and get that more grant funding, I think, in my department specifically, we're going to start to have some really big challenges. So.
What did you pay for the CPA left there?
Uh, our grant was for $45,000. So I did include that position in my budget as I presented it.
This position?
Yep. I just didn't have approval, but I put it in my budget planning. Oh, maybe not. Yes. Um, I, no, I did account for that individual in that.
Yeah, it's in your, it was in your supplemental.
How much, oh, she have notes in your?
I do.
Apparently I missed that one.
I, yeah. Do you have my email list? Do you have?
If it was submitted with the budget, it'll be in my budget book as your preliminary notes. And it should have the dollar amount in there that you budgeted.
I did, yep. So, anyway.
Erin, it's not in your current org chart, right?
It is not.
It's not, it's more than just filling a position. It'd be, they've had one in the past, but it's been quite a while. So it'd be. Is the box gone? Yes. It is actually.
So it'd be a new position, new org chart.
Never given boxes.
I, I was not me. I was not going to get rid of the box.
Leave it. We can't.
So there is a position that we have left. Um, and I am more than willing to trade the position that's there for the position that we need.
What, uh, what percentage of this position is grant funded?
Uh, probably most of it because it's going to be, the big part of their job is getting managing the foundation, public health service money that we're getting. And the, um, because it does allow for business, capabilities as part of the deliverables for that grant. Um, and then, you know, each grant has some sort of like overhead, kind of like, you know, you get X percent of overhead for, per position. So.
So, uh, you don't know.
Like they'll charge their.
The county number, the county would end up paying, but you have an idea of ballpark. You don't know the county number that the county would end up paying, but you have an idea of ballpark or. Something to help.
I mean, all of our positions are grant funded, right? Because it's like, what grants are you working on? You're working on this grant. Then that's where you charge your time to. If I'm working on this grant, you know, if I'm working in COVID, I put my time in COVID. If I'm working in environmental health, I put my time in environmental health. So. Um, the only. We charge very little time though, overhead as of this year. In the past, if you've got our budgets, that's just kind of everybody's just done it. That's where it goes. And I've mostly shut that down. Um, so for the most part, I can't say that. Any of our positions aren't grant funded. If that makes sense. That's my, that's my spiel.
Are you looking at budget numbers? Are we deciding this now?
No, I can come back. I mean, we can discuss it again.
For something else on that. Um, Erin, how many employees do we now have in the health department with our new nurses that we just hired and everything?
Oh, I don't know.
It wasn't in my budget.
I know, I could tell you.
That I just dropped.
Do you, or do you want me to count the contractors or just the staff?
Or staff.
So twenty-one. Anyway, we can talk about it, but that's my spiel for that one. So. And I wanted to give, um, I did put the environmental health numbers on here. So if you have any questions about that. And like one thing that we're going to have to look ahead to, and we haven't made any decisions or heightened discussions, but just kind of. To ponder, um, there's a chance that potentially we uh. Might not do Skamane County's food program next year. Um, as they also get additional. Uh, public health money that they might want to take that back. So.
What program?
The food program. I know that's what I was gonna say. Sorry, the mask, food program. So, um, no decisions have been made, but that's being reviewed and just, just for your awareness.
Food program, you're talking like food handler cards, things like that.
Inspections.
So what, what would that, say they take their program back? What would that mean for us as far as staffing?
Almost nothing. Just because.
But they do, I mean, we get paid, we get a contract.
If, if we, if we do any work for the food program, because we haven't for most of the last year in business. Uh, budget wise, as of right now, that would not be a lot of impact.
Okay.
Some, but not.
Our intent to that is once we, if we don't do the food program over there or the onsite or the water or sign up on the planning and everything over there. That uh, we would cover the roles and the responsibilities that the FPHS money um has. For us that we're gonna receive, which is school safety, school inspections, um, and more robust onsite sewage. Program and a couple of other um programs that that FPHS money is designed to to cover. So even though we would uh relinquish some of those responsibilities, this community, we would have new responsibilities with that FPHS money.
How far are you out on your onsite sewage inspections right now?
Um, it's, I think it's for the most part, it's slowing down. I would say one to two weeks um right now. So. Uh, we've had, uh, with the rain, we've had a few um contractors uh. Requests like pictures and to cover. So a couple of them have submitted pictures and paperwork before we've gone out there and before cover. Just with the weather, sorry.
If you say we're about at that time, where it's gonna be hard for them to submit anything without getting.
Absolutely.
Well, I want to commend you for you guys doing double the amount of inspections that you did last year with the same number of people. I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's been rough.
And I know.
And you haven't anything else to do.
Some really good organization went into the the day. Now I can go pick this up and then drive over here and see this person, then go up here and. All over the place.
And we also had him support our vaccine clinics.
While he was reviewing septic permits with the, here, there you go.
You've set the bar real, real high now. Well, I'm really, I'm really looking to see how that FPHS money and and requirements impact the. The program as it rolls in, so.
Uh, and then I just uh asked David to give a quick update about the uh potable water after saying there's not a lot of times that. And look to see how much time we actually had, but just kind of where we're at. Where it needs to go, so.
Uh, yeah, so the last time we met was July thirteenth and we decided that myself and Commissioner Anderson would work on. Us, the cistern and review PA's or concerns that I have with the certain uh rules. Um, we don't have a lot of time, but I think a more comprehensive meeting with myself, PA's office, board members. Um, or at least one board member to discuss those things is necessary. Uh, I have provided um. A local rule that would uh fall right into our, our chapter, chapter eighteen in particular. That would address our current uh water supply determinations and.
Position page two highlighted one point three.
This said, that one would be the policy. So I've provided two methods of how we can address this.
Just baiting which one I'm looking at.
Right. So the one that's highlighted gray would be the policy. That would be within our own department. And then the one that's uh titled chapter eighteen with the, the blank underscores there would be a local rule adoption. Um, so there is two paths we can move forward at that. The policy is uh modeled off of Spokane Regional Health to ship and then the uh local rules are modeled off of Kedetaz County. Um, I would like to sit down uh with the PA's office to discuss some of the opinions that were. Provided in the first verse what come regarding. The county's role in determining uh water resource issues and land use planning and building permits. So. Uh, I think it needs a little bit more robust discussion on that end. Before we. Uh, jump right into permitting or signing off on building permits.
Well, I think. I, I would like to, for all of us to be in the room to have a chat about this really before we continue because. Um, what I see here is. Oh, I don't want to say a waste of time. Um, but. I, I have numerous problems. Some of them I can get through, um, you know, engineer requirements, but. The design should be based on an average daily of demand of a hundred and twenty gallons per bedroom. With a minimum of two hundred and forty gallons per day. People that live off cisterns don't run water like we run water. And you're, you're kind of telling them they need a five thousand gallon cistern to be legal and and nobody's gonna qualify. So if we're gonna do that, why do it? Is kind of the policy question, I guess, we need to have in this room. Um, because if you're gonna make the rules so stringent that nobody does it, then why are we going for it? Because I don't think people with a cistern that have a three bedroom house uh are gonna be running through. Three hundred and sixty gallons of water a day. That's what they're gonna use in a week.
And you're probably right.
If you're gonna mandate and that count that much per day, then they gotta have these in the same amount of cisterns to keep up. And or weekly contracts with bishops to come deliver it. And it's, they're delivering water they don't need because they're thankful. Um, so it, things like that may need a discussion here.
Again, these are just modeled off of, but I agree, we should have a discussion about. Realistic water usage, which there's plenty of evidence uh in either EPA that you can find about actual usage. Uh, cistern usage or the reduction of water used based on your fixtures in your house. You know, those kind of discussions we had too. This one was pulled straight from Spokane Regional. Um, and the one hundred and twenty, I'm guessing is. Is they use that because that's what it's a minimum requirement for wastewater with the wastewater rule. So it just reflects. What the wastewater rule requires. So I'm guessing they're thinking just.
Water in, water out, right? But if you have to design the, the wastewater for a hundred and twenty gallons per bedroom.
And I'm not complaining they have to de- design their septic for a hundred and twenty gallons because you might use it.
Right.
But if you only want to flush five gallons a day, I'm not gonna punish you for not wasting water.
Yeah, of course. No, no, although I read it there, you know, the system's designed for, but there's no requirement, right? No, but it's not, you don't have to take the, it's like the system is built for it. If I have my, it would be sized for that. And if, if I don't need it topped off, if I'm using a third as much water, I don't, I only get a third as much water. But the system is designed to.
So my point is, you're correct. If the minimum design has to be a hundred and twenty gallons a day. Again, this is a discussion we should, right, we're trying for. Um, but you're, you're now seeking the, that they're using three hundred and sixty gallons a day and. And how many cisterns or what gallons in chain of cisterns are they gonna have to have, which is then in more engineering. Because now they need three hundred or a thousand gallon cisterns to meet the minimum number that you're coming up with.
I guess they could just fill well. But, um, it's, and I'm not trying to make it, I'm not, but it is, there is, there's a reason there would be some minimum. Uh, uh, you know, uh, this is for a, for a bigger discussion, I think. That's why, I mean, I have, I, I have reservations about the whole concept as I said before and I. But I will have an open mind about it as far as, because I think we can. We want to be sure those requirements are synced up with what people would actually probably do.
Yeah, so the professional engineering part of it, I mean, there is a clause that gives them the out that they can demonstrate that they can make the design departments themselves. So if they could meet it themselves, then professional engineers not.
Right. If they, if they could turn you into some blueprints that actually are.
Yes.
Competent. I think we have that with our housing too. We have certain things that say you need an engineer to do something.
Right.
Really don't, if you can do your own and turn it in proper. So some of those, I'm not, I'm not gonna nickel and dime.
Yeah.
Um, but I do want to have an overall discussion on some of these being a little overkill.
You want to schedule it on Thursday?
On a Thursday.
Oh, a Thursday.
On a Thursday, yes, not this Thursday. We need to.
Sure.
We need to clear with the time that the, the council prosecutor, the PA can participate and we can set a block of time. Because I think it's probably a couple of hours. I got, oh, I bet, I bet we are. I got at least an hour at the.
Okay.
Arguing, but that's okay.
I said, I, I would like much weaker.
I've just been, you want accurate numbers, uh, or an accurate number, I think it's that good. Yeah.
Uh, that, anyway, that's all I had. Unless you have questions on the, on any of the statistics that we um pulled out for you. But David did pull out the. East side versus the west side in his environmental health. Um, oh, we also were able to. Fill the food safety position. So we have that position. They're gonna start uh November first and they'll start getting training and then start. Squared away to go out and do restaurant inspections.
Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, Erin, for everything you've been doing. Um, please extend my gratitude. Um, to your staff, um, who's been out there doing the immunization clinics all over the county. Um, you guys are doing a great job. I'm sorry you don't have people banging on the door, but I'm sure you will shortly. Uh, with the uh expansion of ages and boosters and everything else. I see. Uh, you guys alone have done about twenty-seven and a half percent of all of the immunizations in the county. And that's, that's a big win. Um, and um, on top of all the data that you're doing and collecting and managing and, and I, that goes a long ways uh with me. Um, my, my job is is to give you the tools to get to, to do what you need to do. And thank goodness, we're in a situation where there's the money currently. To do the things that you need to do and want to do. I, I look at this, this position that you need in order to keep the thing going and knowing where we've been for many years with the financial situation. Um, that's something we're gonna have to bite the bullet. And I'm thankful that we're in a position where we have a lot of funds currently that we can do that. Um, and, and thank you for putting it in your budget. It's just, um, I would rather be, I'm not, not saying you're gonna get anybody who applies. But um. Just hiring a CPA for the future, we couldn't have probably done that if we didn't have the COVID. Um, so when I look at that. That's, that's a good situation. Um, in terms of moving forward, um, you know, we're. Uh, the board that we've signed a letter to the governor and, and you know, we said that we, we have a, we feel that there's kind of a, a disrespect for. Allowing local decisions. That was the top part of that letter. Um, and, and then, um. We, we were worried about the decreased capacity to handle the crisis. Um, it sounds like it, it looks very much like KVH is getting through that. By maybe exerting some site of, some sort of local decision-making authority that, that may be pushing some lines, but. It's the only thing you can do. And um, and I know you're involved with, with, working with our partners. And so thank you for that, trying to get us there. My big question right now though is, in terms of. Ending the crisis, I see articles out there that say we need to be ninety percent. Or we need to be eighty percent. And, and I look at it's like a place like Clickitac County where, where we're really excited about point one percent increase when we're.
Here.
Forty. And how do we, how do we get to that next stage where in order to turn this thing to become endemic? Um, is it just everybody, that other sixty percent is just gonna have to get COVID? And we need to have pox parties like they used to do, you know, like. Like how, like if, if we don't know what the goals are at the state level, what can we do to support you? To help us get there in our local area, more so than what we've currently been doing.
Uh, first of all, I have to say that we do not recommend pox parties. That's very dangerous. Um, the, the fallout can actually be frankly fatal and, and we definitely don't, we, we don't encourage that. So. I know, but I.
I know, but now we've all said it.
And I've said my piece, so we can move on. Um, I feel. I've lived here for a long time and this is a know your audience sort of scenario. Um, I feel like if we can get to a fifty or sixty percent vaccine rate. I think that's gonna be really good for this county. We've been in a very weird way fortunate with the. I know no one feels this way, but we actually have had fairly low transmission rates. Um, I mean, there, we've had a lot of COVID in this county, but we've been fortunate. Our death rate, you know, unfortunately is twenty for those families. That's a big impact. Um. But I, I don't think as far as vaccine, you know, we've asked people to make the choice to get, we continue to ask people to make the choice. Ultimately, it has to be their choice. And um, I think just being supportive and just. For me, it's just making sure we have access. So for us to continue to go to places and be available for when people make that choice to come in and, and do that vaccine. But. I, there, I, if there was something else we could do, I would welcome that kind of feedback because I feel like. We have, you know, people have called us specifically and asked us to come to their home because they can't even leave their house. Um, you know, we've done evening clinics, weekend clinics. Different areas in the county. Um, so I think it's just on, the onus is on us to just continue to be available for when people make that decision to. To get to that point and choose to get a vaccine.
And I would say you have to be doing something right. Because even, and not saying that it's the only thing, because I will second is, thank you to all of you. But for our county to have a low vaccination rate, but then have actually a low death rate as well. In a lower death rate than other counties that have a higher vaccination rate. The only thing that I can justify that cause of that low death rate has to be you guys and contact tracing. And, and things like that. So, um, kudos to you for that, because, because that's gotta be your guys' number that's keeping that down.
They, staff took it very personally. They are really invested in having people in this county be healthy and just working with people to understand and answer questions. And um, they, they've been. And answer questions and um, they, they've been passionate and committed to doing that, and I, I think that that makes, I do think that makes a difference, and because. Up until recently, we did keep it local, so all of our contract nurses were, or contact tracers were. And people that we, we grew up here, we know, so when we call and say, hey, it's Erin, they know who's on the other end of the phone, and they know I'm not giving you. A line, and some people still do, but that's. And just try to make people understand, it's, you know, it's a choice, we just wanna support you in your decision and the education to get you to get.
And I appreciate that you do all that you do. I guess I would say without a political bias in any way, if somebody said that, oh, she's doing that because of politics, I would call BS. Because I haven't seen it. So I, I, I commend you for that too, you're keeping any kind of bias you have one way or the other out of the equation, that, that's all I can ask. Um, so again, kudos for that, one last question on your, your potential new hire. C P A, do, what's the chances you think you're gonna be able to fill this?
Well, I'm not asking for a C P A, that's who we've been using, but I need a skill set of someone that has that accounting background.
So.
C P A like.
C P A like, but there's.
Need to do that.
Yes. Yes, that's my, so I'm at the juncture where I need to decide if I'm gonna renew this professional service contract, or, or have someone on staff. And uh, this professional service contract is expensive. Um, and I think I will get double the return on investment having someone. Physically in my office, that's not a reflection on the folks that we've been working with, they're incredible.
With little, if any, grant donors is what you're trying to say.
But no, backwards, yes, yes, yes.
This will be at the manager level. I'm gonna move along.
I have my opinion of that.
I'm fine with it.
As long as you're aware, just like everybody. As long as you're aware that, like I tell everybody else, anytime it's a grant fund position, or the grant goes away, we're gonna have to have it as a part.
Yeah, so this grant I have through twenty twenty-three, so I feel good about that, and I'll just, because Jake and. Commissioner Christopher and Anderson weren't here when I was hired, but I was hired to um. Help fix a lot of things that had gone wrong in the past.
That I provide you with the tools you think you're gonna need to fix that.
Promised that I would make it physically solvent, that was my promise when I was hired, so I'm very aware of. Dollars, how they're spent, and I will not be responsible.
Dollar spent later.
So we'll work with Erin, that we'll have to do a resolution or start a revision, and you'll have to prove the job description, so it'll take a while. Okay, thank you, and everything they said, you know. Thank you.
All right, I'll see you Thursday. Round three times in one week.
Kevin, I'll thank you for the water thing. Like I said, a couple of weeks, I'd like to see, but other than that, I appreciate the work, thank you.
Yeah, it's uh, again, no.
Okay, we are running behind, so next is hopefully uh. Toby's there, okay. This is a Underwood Conservation District update. So this telling has, the floor is yours.
Hello, hello, thank you for having me, um, my name's. No problem, interesting conversation there. Um, yeah, thanks for making the time for this, um, I usually make an appointment with you each year to provide some updates from Underwood Conservation District. Um, and it's always good to have some dialogue and hear, uh, hear some of your feedback, and I wanted to introduce um, at least one board member that's here today. Barbara Bailey, she's also here in attendance by Zoom. Yeah, so hopefully you can hear us, all right?
Yes.
Great.
Went through loud and clear.
Okay, good, this is a new experience doing this over Zoom. We're all adapting to that, aren't we? So yes, uh. Uh, Commissioner Anderson is very familiar with us, since he served on our board for a number of years. Um, but to just get us started off on the same page, I wanted to give a quick review of who we are at Underwood Conservation District. We're a non-regulatory service district led by a local board of supervisors, one of them being Barbara here. Underwood Conservation District, or U C D, covers all of Skamania County and the western portion of Clickatack County, um, just west of the Clickatack River. And we have a small staff of five, uh, we're primarily grant funded to provide a wide range of natural resource support to local landowners. So that's um, that's a broad topic, of course, so I will be touching on some of those um, specific natural resource activities. That we've been up to over the last year, um, and throughout the COVID pandemic, we have been able to maintain and even grow some of our services and programs. So that's been a really, a real success for us at the Conservation District. Um, we've been able to maintain one of our most important services, um, in my perspective, which is the outdoor. On-site visits with private landowners, so we can visit individual properties and give. Technical assistance and advice for the natural resource concern that they may be um, dealing with. So just to touch on a few of our different programs and services, uh, we have been able to maintain a small program. For the firewise work in Clickatack County, um, unfortunately, this is a program limited by lack of consistent funding. Um, we have had a grant over the last year with Washington D N R funding, and that's helped us maintain. Our mobile chipper service and our home hazard assessments to individual property owners. Um, so that's been really helpful to folks, but that grant ends in December and will again be looking for funding. So that's been a challenge to maintain consistent funding for a firewise program in Clickatack County. Um, we do provide technical assistance, again, on a wide range of topics to landowners. Uh, whether they're farmers, ranchers, woodlot owners, or just one of the many residents that need a little help, uh, meeting their natural resource goals. Um, one of our new programs that we um, developed over the COVID year. Is uh, Yard by Yard, which is a backyard conservation program, and it's really intended to be a. A landowner-led program, um, voluntarily, again, of course, at the, land, landowners can. Adopt different practices and get advice from us again in terms of enhancing their backyard habitat and conserving natural resources. So that's available on our webpage and with site visits from our staff. Um, we have. Made our tools available or maintained the availability of our tools um, for rent. That's the manure spreader that's available through D J's and Binge'n, and then we added a no-till drill last year. And so that's been an exciting new offering for rent and very popular already. Um, and then we're growing that tool library to develop kind of a, a farm tool library with a physical space. And uh, the details of this were provided in my written update as an appendix. Where really within the next week or so, we're gonna have a new tool shed. Um, set in white salmon, full of tools and available for loan, so different farm tools of, of a wide variety. Um, and we'll have a, a webpage for folks to be able to go on and reserve the different tools that they may need to borrow for their. Their gardens or their farms.
Yeah, Toby, I had a question on those, I was, I, I went through the, the documents that you provided us, and I was looking at the, your tool library tool list. And I'm very familiar with almost every one of those, but I did wonder, what's a weed wrench? I, I was curious what, what that was, if you, if there's a wrench that works on weeds, I would like to get one. I can rep one, apparently, so what, what is that?
Yeah, well, those are available, we have two, um, we actually got one of them from Marty Hudson at the Noxious Weed Department, and they're these giant levers. With a, a grip at the bottom. Like a large Scotch broom plant, if you can imagine, you know, two or three inch thick trunk of a Scotch broom, it'll help wrench it straight out of the ground. Yeah, like a post puller.
Yeah, it's like, we didn't have, I wasn't wasted, I was the weed wrench, there was no.
Yeah, anything to help that job be a little easier is, is good, so. Yeah, um, we have continued our soil testing assistance, so we cost share with folks on soil testing and interpreting the, the results from those soil tests. And that's ever popular, um, we also cost share on other small-scale projects, and right now we're developing a few um. Spring developments and livestock watering projects right now, that we hope to fund um, and implement in the next few months. Um, if a large-scale project comes along, we apply for grants, and that can include water quality protection projects for dairies in Trout Lake. Or fencing projects for some of the open-range cattle operations in Clickatack County, um, they take many different forms. Um, and one of those large-scale projects was with the White Salmon Irrigation District. Um, I provided a visual aid for that project with my written update, and so hopefully you're able to review that. And Jake is very familiar with that project, since it was right in his backyard. Um, but it provided multiple benefits to irrigators, um, it upgraded the system for the irrigators themselves, they have a, a brand new. Nine thousand foot length pipe, um, that doesn't leak, that doesn't have, um, some of the problems that they were dealing with prior to that. Um, and that piping also helped conserve water for Buck Creek, uh, where they withdraw from, so water was kept in stream. And of course, that benefited fish habitat for salmon and steelhead that inhabit Buck Creek. Uh, we also provided fish passage past the diversion point and provided a built, uh, W D F W built fish screen. So that's now in place and, and helps the irrigation district be in compliance with fish screen requirements. So that was really one of our biggest projects ever for the Conservation District, and really a, a big milestone for everyone involved. Um, I'd be happy to help get you all out there someday when it's time for a site visit, if the weather complies, and if you have time. Um, it would be a really great place to visit and just see the work that was put into that project, so.
I would love to see it.
Oh, great. Good to hear the interest.
I like field trips like that.
I, I can learn on field trips.
That's right, see things in person. Good. Well, um, we have a lot of different public outreach, and I listed several of those in our written update. Um, different avenues we developed through, um, through the pandemic, it really forced us to try a few new things out for public outreach. Um, and one of the focuses there is to develop, um, or to, to gather public input. Around the future of Pacific Orlans on the White Salmon River, and I wanted to mention this because we'll be using salmon recovery grant dollars in the next year. Um, facilitated through the Clickatack lead entity, and those grant dollars are designed to help us get a little further down the road with. Planning for long-term management and ownership, um, of those Pacific Orlans that matches community interests and needs. So there's a lot of research and information gathering that has to go into that. Um, and again, we are developing a, a community-driven vision for the river corridor through there. Um, that was begun with a survey just last May. Uh, so hopefully some of you saw that survey, and we were able to gather nearly five hundred responses through that survey and get. A lot of valuable input from the community around what that long-term vision for the White Salmon River Corridor, um, how that would look. Ideally for folks, so um, there's about five hundred acres involved in that area, and um. It's gonna be a really interesting project.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
No, this is Commissioner Christopher, did you survey, did I get that right, you surveyed about five hundred people that, that actually live right there in the corridor of the river? Is where you.
Sure, thanks, sorry to interrupt, many of the um, respondents are from the local community. Actually don't have that breakdown right in front of me in terms of how many were from outside the community, because it was open to a broader. Array of people, we didn't limit it to just local community members.
As long as it's local and it's, yeah, it's what they wanna do, then that's what we wanted it.
Yeah, and I could follow up with that information for you in terms of exactly the, the location of the respondents. It was broadly, um, a majority of folks were from the local area around Underwood, White Salmon, Hussum, and Binge'n. Primarily. So, that's coming up, um, much more to learn and, and develop in terms of how that, um, that community vision comes into focus. And some of the necessary steps to achieve that, that vision. Um, other than that, we are continuing our annual native plant sale starting this winter, so um, that's always a, a. Great way to reach out to landowners and provide our services. Um, we're hoping to have our usual tree fest in March when we distribute those tree orders. And um, thank you again for your time, and if there's time now, Barbara and I can try to answer any other questions.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Comments?
Uh, well, I would like to say as a user of your tree order, I have about a hundred and fifty Christmas trees out there now because of you guys, so. I will be adding fifty a year and, and hopefully have a rotation going eventually. Uh, so thank you for that, other than that, I don't have a lot of comments, just keep up, good work.
Good to hear, thank you.
Good, yeah, no, I really have no questions, thanks, now that you, I know what a weed wrench is. That was bothering me last night. Because I was kinda curious what tools you did have available for rent in the, in the, so I was perusing your list and.
Yeah.
That was the one, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know what that was, but. Thank you, thank you for the work that you do and uh. And, you know, just keep it up.
Okay, well, thank you for your support, as always, it's good to see you all.
Oh, oh, Toby, I did have one question.
Sure.
It's been a couple, couple, three years, I know when we did the rates and charges. A couple, a couple, three years ago, I guess. I'm trying to recall if under, we, we, did we do that, did you do that as well, or was that just the district two and district three? Was the cross the whole, that's what I, I thought, yeah. You know, has that helped a little bit, I, I remember at the time, you know, it's, it's not a huge amount of money, but it is, you know, it's some stable funding. Uh, for the organization, has that stabilized at least a little bit?
It definitely adds to our base of support, for sure, and, and uh, it's just a little over forty thousand that we've been able to garner each year. Um, and so again, it's not a huge amount, but it really is um, enough to, you know, give us a little bit more base. Support to provide some of these services I'm talking about with our plant sale and with the, the farm tool library and the Yard by Yard program. Plus all of the other site visits and cost share that we can provide. So, um, yes, definitely, it's allowed us to focus in on some of those base operations right here in Clickatack County, thank you.
Good, that's, that's, I mean, it's nice, you know, that we're, you know, we're always, it's a difficult. Discussion to have, you know, raising taxes, which I know that they're rates and charges, they're not taxes, but it's. In, in government, if you're collecting money, it's a tax as far as, but at least as far as the public is concerned. And um, it, it's nice that it, what it actually works, what it does. Actually help with the problem that was identified, why the need was there, so.
Could help provide better service.
Yeah, so that's good.
Yes.
All right.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, Barbara, we didn't let you get a word in edgewise.
No, Toby does a great job, thank you all.
Okay, I am gonna move us to the letter of support to the West State Department, to the Washington State Department of Transportation. To provide direct funding agreement to the Port Hood River, this is with the five million dollars, so does anybody have any issue with signing that letter?
I watched a video, a TV show about a bridge collapse about a week ago.
Oh.
So now every time I drive across. Twice in the last week, I'm just gripping that steering wheel like my novel is on red, so.
Because my, I have a whole scenario in my head of what, you know, I, I hope it would not be in the winter.
The seismic report, and, and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, it was really short, it was a single sheet of paper, it said, you're screwed.
My weight reduction is going a long ways with my conversations with the state legislators and with the senators on. This is what.
This is why.
How does that weight restriction work, it's, it's like eighty thousand pounds.
It was.
That per vehicle, or is that the number of cars on the bridge at any one time?
No, it's, it's eighty thousand pounds, um, it was eighty, it's now down to sixty two thousand. But that, that depends on, like, that's the maximum, maximum amount, but that depends on the number.
Yeah, there's a whole formula.
But.
And so you think about. I think I've been over in rigs before that probably exceeded the.
You, you also, so you've got eighty thousand could be coming this way and eighty thousand that could be going this way. So really on one span, you had potential for a hundred and sixty thousand, but now it's gone by each other, yeah.
And you'll notice that if you notice there's a dip, like you're. The, the most thing that you. You'll really notice it is when, like if they're stopping traffic.
That's when.
And you're sitting there and then the other traffic goes and you're, you think that thing is stable. And you're just like moving around every time.
When you're stopped and you realize.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it is really.
Like you said.
I just.
So much for documentaries about bridge collapse.
Yeah. Okay, so we're good with the letter, so that brings us to co-compliance. Mr. Pratt.
Should I get her a coffee?
Should always get staff copies.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
This last time, it was uh, I wound up with a copy.
Oh, yeah, you don't know who's gonna be here this.
Yeah. Make sure I have. This, the second page, I'll, I'll kinda preface. Yeah, this is an update, obviously, uh, to start off with, uh, so the mobile radio's been installed and thanks to Jeff King. And to uh, Tim here, uh, for making that happen. And I've used it probably half dozen times now. Um, field, so it's uh, nice to have. Meetings, had meetings with plant department and building health, public works and department ecology. Uh, all circle back around the department ecology. Meeting. But uh, these meetings included reviewing the status of open cases and discussing priorities. Uh, still need to meet with, always had a, a short impromptu yesterday uh with Ruby. Uh, right alongs, there's been two right alongs, building department, uh, four with the health department, field. A couple of those were. Addressing directly the septic issues that one case has been resolved. Um, so, uh, the other one is uh. In the works of being resolved, we got with the property owner out there. Uh, she seemed very uh. And willing to work with the county to get uh, the issue of that. So, uh, reviewed the cases, co-compliant cases from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one. Uh, and approximately nine of these cases are technically closed. I'm still working on. Trying to make sure that, in order to close them on the computer, uh, data file. I, I think I've figured it out now, how that, that uh, works in there, but uh. And then one was dismissed by the court, um, and that was uh, would've been one from uh, last year. Currently, they're only, uh, the only cases that are actively being investigated or followed up on are the twenty twenty and twenty twenty one septic issues. Of which are currently twelve, uh, twenty twenty one open cases. The thirteenth case was, like I said, was closed um, earlier, uh, actually last week.
Didn't realize there was twelve, wow, that's a big number.
Yeah. Uh, and that's just with, that's not including ones from past, uh, even going back farther, so. Uh, there are now approximately hundred and seventy three open cases total. Some of these are pending follow up and may have. Had their investigation suspended due to moratorium that is set to expire, I believe, December thirty first of this year. The following is breakdown of the open cases of a Cal septic non-compliance uh twenty one. Unpermitted construction or uh placement thirty six, and when I say placement, that's also, you know, uh, mole home. Uh, solid waste fourteen, shoreline management, uh, plan violations, eight recreational vehicle trailer habitation. That would be uh RV um habitation. Uh, twenty nine, container placement one, um, and then nuisance complaint, there are currently sixty four open cases.
Container placement, they just need a permit for the container, right?
Uh, except for, my understanding has to be renewed if you wanna keep the container, uh, that this is a renewable permit. Yeah, I.
Really?
Yeah.
Containers have actually been permitted.
Not many.
Yeah, and I think.
Two, one of which was ours.
And I can guess that the intent was, you know, while you're building and you have a storage container. Uh, utilizing uh, of that. And then you'd have, have, have the permit to have a container. Just as you have the permit to be able to live in your RV while you're building your, right, your home. Um, and I think that's the intent, uh, but. So, uh, yeah, of course, I, I didn't know that until I started going through.
It sounds like you're educating us as well as.
Yeah, well, I, I'm learning something every, near every day, that's for sure. I still have a stack of complaints I've been going through, um, and you, you know, not, not opening up. Or even assigning cases, case numbers to them because of uh, the moratorium. And I receive about three or four complaints per week. That also includes phone call uh complaints. Uh, as well, so like I had, I think it was four last week, which I dated two of them in complaints. And then, uh, and I should probably preface uh, that to this email complaints where people are sending an email in. Whether it's from a department forwarding on an email or direct.
What kind of complaints are you getting?
The uh, it, it's mainly abatement. They.
Dogs and grass.
Not to me of the, of the like animal nuisance uh complaints. Which.
What are we doing with trailer habitation?
Well, we're not doing anything, I'm, I'm collecting them and in a file and, and then there's got the other ones. That are already been assigned nuisance complaint case numbers that, you know, go back to. Two thousand and ten, if not earlier than that.
Probably, the same other state laws during like that stuff, so.
The move, so I'm out of this office, back over to the old compliance office and into patient for the move. And I'm boxing up stuff there, so I boxed up my stuff, well, actually, most of the stuff I didn't even pack, but. Over there, the phone is now transferred, you know, so the co-compliance number is transferred to the number in that old co-compliance. Office. You, this is uh, yeah. And uh, that, you guys, you know better than I do on this, on the, the timeline of the move, but. Uh, my understanding is I think that building department's supposed to move the last week. Um, in November, and since that's where my office will be.
That's when you'll move.
That makes sense, yeah. So on the, this second page, I'd like to go back and mention, I, you know, the meeting I had with Department of Ecology and. A, a lot of the issues that they're, they were talking to me about it, uh, with shoreline management plan. And SEPA violations, these, these type of things. So I scoured, went back over the, the codes and I'm having some difficulty that. I need to have some answers and that may be from the PA's office. But uh. In the enforcement authority, there's no mention of code enforcement or compliance officer having any authority. In section one point two zero point zero four zero.
That's shoreline management?
No, that's the authority part, and this is, this was when. This was what prompted me to go back over and check over authority, cause they were saying, well, you need to enforce this and enforce that. And so I got back over to see, okay, well, what, what am I enforcing underneath the county uh code? So that prompted me to go back over to, to start from the beginning with, okay, the enforcement authority in the first title. Entitled uh, one point two zero point zero four zero, and I apologize, I don't have a copy for you. But I'm taking all this information right from the uh county codes listed on the website. Uh, county enforcement officer has authority to issue and those infracting the enforcement officials. In the sheriff's office shall be the general and limited authority peace officers, which I do have a limited authority commission. Uh, underneath the sheriff's department, then uh enforcement officials in the building department shall be. All licensed building inspectors, the enforcement officials in the planning department shall be all planners. The sheriff and the department heads may designate additional enforcement of uh officials in their respective offices. Enforcement officials shall receive training in enforcing these chap, uh, excuse me, in enforcing those chapter. Unless otherwise provided, the sheriff's department shall be the primary enforcement officials for the county code. I saw that in the first part, when I, first, I just kinda winged over it, I just, you know, okay. You know, and then when I went back, um, I saw that and I'm like, huh. So then I, I went back to. Uh, some other. Codes, and what I found was, there's only two, two titles. That even mentioned the authority of enforcement or, or uh co-compliance officer. And that's in the title eight, uh, in a couple of those sections entirely, or each health, uh, health department. And then under the title, um, fifteen. Uh, primarily title fifteen point three eight, and so when I went to look at that, I, I found out. Uh, and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but I found out that there was a update. In the title fifteen point three eight, and that it was supposed to have a different title number. And I, I don't know where that is. Uh, again, I'm taking it from, from the website, we don't have.
Fifteen three eight is nuisance or. Part of building, right?
Yeah, and that's part of, that's underneath.
Going to pull that, make a new, uh, make a new whole code. For uh, code compliance, submit that to the prosecutor and, and. That was done, but it wasn't ratified and we kept the.
Okay. Okay, that's, that answers that, that question.
Correct, we're correct, right? Yeah, I think we have some work to do.
Has not been approved yet, it needs.
Well, he didn't, the prosecutor didn't like the new one, he said, leave the old one the way it is, it works, don't fix it if it ain't broke. But it sounds like you have some things that he might wanna look at to make sure.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, these are questions that I have and if he's able to.
Well, and I know that what is available online is not the. Like, there's some stuff has not been updated as far as what's available. Yes, ma'am?
I believe it was in January that this board. At the direction of the health, excuse me, building inspection director. Took out code compliance nuisance from title fifteen, created a new one. With a type and number to be assigned, it was never assigned, and then I took it. And assigned numbers, researched, and that will check with the PA, and then you all. Approved that, so it should be its own standalone.
I didn't know we approved that because I thought we sent it to a PA opinion request and he. Had an opinion. So I thought that's where it was left, I didn't know it was. He had a very strong opinion. So. Unratified and we went back to the original. Because of his strong opinion of our artwork. There needs to be some prosecutor.
Yeah, I think.
I'll double check.
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll get some clarity around.
And that's why when I went, uh, let them start it, I'm kinda like, here's your thing, but. If you're gonna find issues like this, when you do, bring them forward so we can bring them over there, get an opinion.
Yeah.
Amend whatever we currently are running on, which I believe is the old one.
Uh, Lynn, I see you've unmuted, is that, did you have?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
It's not part of title fifteen anymore, it was pulled from title fifteen. And we had given it the number of XX until it was decided upon. And the last I heard is that it was gonna just be used as the wording is while it was. Reworded at some point and assigned a number, but it is not part of title fifteen any longer. When we adopted February first, it's pulled out of.
It's the old code with the new number and it's not a fifteen, so it's the same.
If we wanted to fix it later, we didn't have to go into fifteen to fix it. Whatever that number is.
Well, that's my.
I'll find it for you, I've got it.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, I would, I guess, step on anybody's toes, but I would say we need to have a PA. He needs to kinda give it to PA and check on, make sure he's got the right authority based in there to. And or even if he does, because of his, his.
Right.
Service. Um, we need to maybe change that wording, so. He decides to leave us, the position has that authority.
Yeah, it seems like a code compliance officer should be able to enforce.
It can have said the designate the.
Design me, so I think that.
Well, building director.
You know, when you, well, when you go through each title, uh, many of these titles, it says, the director of. That department has the authority uh to enforce all provisions of a particular title.
I make it designate.
Doesn't, doesn't say anything that I found where it says designate. Um, and if I'm, if I'm working for planning, yeah, they, well, your mind doesn't need, that's one, but I don't report to them.
Right.
I report to you, you know, the board.
I just wanna make sure that if, if, if the prosecutor says we need designate in there. Um, I don't wanna have a case go to court and then have that guy say, wait a minute, this isn't.
Right.
He has no authority in the whole case, let's throw it out.
So I, I mean.
Nip it at the bud.
Yeah, I realize this is a, a, a unique situation here, but, yeah, I don't know how this would go. It's challenged, I mean.
Do, do we need to submit that PA request or can we advise him to work with the PA there to have your uh, relationship, so?
See, yeah, as far as work directly with PA as far as and find out, as far as, you know, can you show, but what, or what do we need to? Change, amend, add.
And, and maybe I'm, I'm missing.
Right.
And you'll bring it out, say, well, that's your key component right there.
Right, that's, there's your authority right there.
Yeah, but I, I'm just not, I'm not seeing it, except for in a couple of these, the title fifteen point three eight and then. Whatever the new number is, but, and then a couple of sections, I don't need to help the department. This is it, so, I, I don't have anything else, it's.
I have two questions.
Okay.
Wasn't there a new state law that says you can't. Evict people from the, you can't tow their car or their trailer or anything they're living in, cause that's their home, it's now their domicile.
Yeah.
How are we gonna address that with trailer habitation?
Uh, I, I think that's a, definitely a PA question, you know, I, 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 I think my role is enforcing what comes down. But I know that, I think it was Washington's Association of Cities and Counties, the counties and cities, I think. Yeah, um, I saw that they recommended, you know, wasn't in relation to public. Our private properties in relation to private, public properties, so the limit to your enforcement. To, uh, uh, as far as vehicles that you perceive as domiciles.
Right.
Uh, they're telling people. They're telling people, you know, kind of hands off on.
Right, that's kind of what. Get a P A's opinion on that, we would know what we're gonna do with these twenty nine cases or any future phone calls.
Yeah, well, and that's, that's the other, you know, question I have is when, when the floodgates do open.
Right, because that was my second part. So I'm hoping that while you're in there, you can ask him about trailer habitation, and get an answer for us on whether that's enforcing or not.
So, so are you worried that we would be kicking people off of public property and pushing them into the public? Uh, kicking people off of private property and pushing them into the public right of?
I don't think you have it by law that you could do either, right now, under Washington state law. I don't think you can tell them they can't sleep in their car to park or a trailer on their house. That's the law that just passed, and that's why I'm worried about, for the most part, us doing anything until we have an interpretation of that. Because that is their domicile.
Yeah, my. Okay, but I think my, my recollection is you're correct, that, that the law was about yeah, on public right of way, not on privately.
Right.
I mean, you're, I see.
I don't want to get, I don't want to go to court.
I think it's, I think it's silent on.
Absolutely, and maybe that's the case, and that's all fine and baby, I don't want to go to court. I would like an easy legal opinion on if that's the case.
Okay.
To save us from going whoops later.
And it may be that it goes back and says, well, you need a test case in order for that to happen, I mean. It's just that when you look at this and say, well, if, if, and there's, I think you know, obviously, I don't know all the legal, it gets announced of this, but when the Supreme Court, state Supreme Court came with, with the decision, and I did mention to the P A, I said, oh, this is interesting, he says, well, there's some other issues in there that, that maybe went the wrong way out yet, but if it's more difficult on public property, you know, how do we approach it when it's somebody's private property? Yeah.
But then the, the extension of that is you're not going to be able to regulate anything on anything. Why do I need a building grade? Why do I need, you can't, this is my. Oh, I know.
I'm not arguing for or against, I just don't want to pay litigation for us being wrong by arguing one way or another. So I want clarification that we have that authority to, to be pro or against, and then we can have that discussion. Is all I'm asking for.
Okay.
So that was my, my number one, and my number two is this moratorium is still in place until December thirty first. Are we planning on leaving it in place until December thirty first?
And what are grounds will be too?
Well, that was kind of my question, are we, are we ready to not have a moratorium on that, or?
I mean, we have a, if a compliance officer in place, what's our grounds for having, not rescinding it now?
That's my argument, that's why I'm asking the question, without making the motion of the question.
I mean, my big thing was, is I wanted to give Lem enough time to get in there, get to know all the players. Get to know the people he's working with, get to feel comfortable, get all of his questions answered on enforcement and everything. If he needed any training, so that then, you know, the first of the year, he could start, you know, really pushing. I mean, my, my first question is, is if you're getting four complaints a week, how many complaints do you feel like you can work through in a week?
Well, I mean, you, on cases, you work at different stages on a particular case, so, you know. In one case, it's like, okay, well, I was able to, you know, the landlord returned. You know, they received a certified letter, they returned called, we set up a, a time to meet. And, and at this point, it's okay, we'll, we'll work on the health department, you know, in order to mitigate the situation that they have there. And so and the, the other time, it's like, okay, I'm just receiving a report. And so I'm looking at it and saying, okay, is this a nuisance complaint? Or, or is this a health violation, or, yeah, I can take some action, but, you know, so those, okay, well, I shelved that. On some of these, I'll look and see, what's the zoning area, so. I, I mean, it's, it's when you're, you know, working cases from beginning to end, you've got different stages in each particular case, and you may have a whole bunch, now, some of these. I found a couple of these cases, one of them, should have never been assigned.
Number.
A number, it was totally a civil issue. And completely a private property issue. And so what I did is, is then I rescinded the, the case number. And then went on, I mean, and, and how far back, that's the other thing too, is, is how far back do I, you know, go back in the case files and work those cases of that hundred and seventy three, you know, active cases, even if, and of course, you know, like, right now, sixty four of them, well, or maybe a little more, just, not just the but if, you know, the, the moratorium's lifted, and it's, you know, hundred and seventy four, seventy three, but again.
I would think.
Just one of those cases back from nineteen ninety nine, it was never closed out, and I'm looking at the cloud, like, why was there no?
I would think septic ones, we would need to keep, and this is just my own thought, because that's a public health issue. But I do understand that, you know, maybe having a date limit on all others that are public health issue. But I'm open to logical thought. But also, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm thinking if we can get the answer to some of these, or at least give him guidance on which ones. You know, we don't care about somebody's grasping too long, you can tell those people, sorry, that's not for us, and eliminate one phone call when it comes in.
That's why I'm wondering, are you able to sort some of those individuals as far as the?
Yeah, and I have.
If you get four, and, you know, two of them are not even, it's like, I'm, I, I hear you, but this really is a civil matter, this does not.
Right, yeah.
You need to have with your neighbor.
And that's, that's not an issue, I mean, I, I've had a couple of those calls back last week that dealing with, where it's, you're talking about private road here. You know, the county can't get involved in private easement issues, so, and then and those are the primary, you know, a gal living in R R B gets kicked off of the property. The property owner invicts her, well, there's not anything that I can enforce there, it's, it's a civil.
Right.
Issue. So that, those are manageable things, you know. And, you know, I tell you, from past experience, when you're sharing calls, and you may have twenty calls in a day in a shift that you're dealing with, and half of those, you're taking paper on. You know, so, I mean, that's, you know, and again, we go back to depending on, on how that go. A lot of those can be eliminated just by, you know, saying, okay, we're, we're not gonna be investigating.
Anything that's three years, over three years old, where it's not even five or whatever it is.
And some of those, I think, is just a matter of, well, this, this complaint came in, like, we had one that was complaining, and the person that they, you know, that was the property owner passed away. Well, that case is closed, because the situation that they had there, yeah, there's a, there's a structure there. It's still in the guy's name, but there's nothing that I can do at this point in order to contact the owner. Passed away, I mean, that's, yeah.
So I would say, yeah, we should set a date. I don't care what the date is, two years, three years, five years, don't care, I do think we should still be looking at at least investigate septic stuff that goes back farther than that. Because if they got at least feel this leaching into a creek or something, we should be doing our due diligence and making sure that. You know, I don't care if it was five years ago, that we don't have that current situation going on.
I would say for me, I think, I think there's general agreement on the septic stuff, and let's work on that. As far as the other stuff, once you're kind of really open for business, I think we are gonna have to kind of prioritize, because there's.
Right.
And so I think we're gonna have to set some, like, you do this, and then you work on this, and you work, and some of this stuff is just
Yeah.
We're not gonna get to for quite some time, if at all, and it's just, there's gonna be a I, I think, because I don't know any other way, you know, it would be different if you were starting from zero. And then you could, but you've got this enormous backlog, that somehow, we are going to have to chop some of those off to get rid of them, just to get you kind of current, so that you can deal with stuff as it comes in the door.
Well, it's like if he's out feeling with cold cases from ten years ago, trying to reinvestigate, reexamine, and the data's moved, and the stuff's moved, and it's, it's. Look at some of that as being, if they complained in the last couple of years, make a new complaint.
Yeah.
Well, this came off in three years.
Some of the claims may not be ready.
Right, and so those are like.
That's what I'm saying, I'm happy to set a date range, if whatever my teammates are willing to willing to do is fine with me, just set a date range and everything older than that, if it isn't septic related, it's off.
It just goes and we, it's, it's a reset.
What date rates work for you guys? Said I'm wide open, I don't care, two, three, five, I don't.
I, I'm fine with Lem making that decision as he reviews the cases to be like, you know, how high, what, what, I mean, because you have all sorts of different valuations on, you know, how destructive or dangerous or something, something may be. You know, a shoreline's complaint from three years ago for clearing next to the stream, well, you go and look at it now, it's.
Right.
Yeah, well, not like, you, you're doing a follow up on that, and you see the conditions, so, okay.
Follow up, and it's like, oh, it's still ongoing and.
Or worse.
Or worse now.
The horseshoe pit.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I would, I would agree, I would.
Alright, so, apparently there's no date range, just check them off, because you need to check them off.
Yeah, but work on the septic things.
And yeah, the more you can get closed out, you're just like, I mean, you have a wide array of latitude and discretion to say this doesn't really move up to the nuisance, I mean, we've got sixty four nuisance complaints, and you're like, does this really affect you? Is this continually affecting you? Is this where I must spend my time on? Because I think the nuisance complaint numbers are gonna go up and, and be.
Well, it's, it's kind of interesting, because some of these complaints, and then when you, you look at where these people actually reside. And they have no property within five miles of where the.
They shouldn't even have three.
Then, then you look at that and say, underneath the procedures policy, that's.
That's what I'm afraid of, is that we got in the habit of, people were complaining, and so we it's really easy to take the information and we're starting a thing, and then, but we, it, you have to have the hard conversation upfront, saying I know there, I know it's difficult, and it's not this, but it really does not rise to the level of some.
Pretty good, and I think, I don't know, I would, I would say that for me, you have a wide range of latitude in how you interpret private property rights too. I mean, if they have a problem, and you say, no, that's not something that, that we're the county gonna get involved in, if they got a problem with it. They can stand right here at one o'clock and tell us we need to have a problem with it, and if we agree, we'll like, you know, that's true.
Who's your boss? Talked about one o'clock on Tuesday.
And then complaining that my neighbors putting up. Yeah, it's, it's private property, it don't, so. It's definitely, I, you know, I'm, I'm not. If, if there's no enforcement, if there's no enforcement, I mean, and then they, they've got to take a different avenue, then, right.
I'm just worried you're gonna get bogged down in a bunch of eight, ten year old cases, and you're so changed that
Well, I'd say same with the new stuff.
And we'll worry about the old.
Yeah, certainly the septic stuff is, is what I'll.
That's a easy.
The first year until next week, when you.
You got twenty one of them to deal with, so, when those twenty one are gone, come back and see.
A moratorium to lift before December thirty first. Because that's up to us, and we're listening to you, and so if you're ready, when you're ready.
Yeah.
That could go away.
All right, thank you. All right. When we move on the consent agenda.
Saying in a massive order.
Yes.
Chairman, I have made a motion to approve the consent agenda with all eighteen items.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
I, motion passes.
Thank you.
Yes, now, Mr. Barker has asked me a series of questions, a series of times, and I'm not in position to respond to, so I asked him if he would like to come to see you guys on Thursday about his proposed budget, and he said, yes, so, is, can we add him to the list? Of departments on Thursday? Thank you.
Can you tell us what his question was?
You can forward that. I did, you did.
You're quoted in there, so like.
I noticed you said it to me, but I have quoted.
Brenda and Greg actually have a specific time on the docket, neither one of them need a specific time on the docket. So Larry can have one of their times.
Okay.
And it might keep us moving faster.
Okay.
Or both of their times, I don't care.
Thank you.
Okay, anything on board pending that you want to bring up for us?
Other than the coffee machines that we're still looking for.
You guys need to be considering some appointments, especially for Well, you don't need to actually make a decision now, you just need to let me know, because then I can prepare them for your consideration. V O E, I've got one applicant that seems fairly experienced.
This is to replace Jerry Snell?
Yes, sir, she is not in District One, that's not a requirement, but that's what we've taken.
Have somebody. From District One, yeah.
To some degree, but you have two districts.
Who is this one coming from?
She lives in District Three.
So there would be no District One.
Be no District.
Just like there's no.
Commissioner Anderson did, somebody did express an interest, so. Okay, he wants to, or she wants to send in an application, you guys consider.
I would defer to the district that the vacancy was in, at least for a period of time, you know, if we can't function and we gotta fill it.
We're still okay.
Right. Try to keep.
So, I've been working on it.
Yeah, that's a real fun one to try to.
I know, I've been working on it.
I've got several others that they are coming up for reappointments at the end of the year, they have been longstanding, they have submitted applications. Which I did, I gave you guys a list.
Yeah, I've been working on mine, I think I got one for the I mean, that's interesting, and it was for planning commission.
Are you guys? Do you want to consider, you don't have to make a decision now, historically, the board has allowed employees to be on Christmas Eve at noon.
Yeah.
And then the following week, by four in the evening. For, you see.
Right.
That's something you guys want to consider again for this year.
Most of them are on vacation anyway.
Anyway, I know, that's, that's kind of how we, we used to be, it was an hour early, and then we found there was nobody left, everybody got taken a day off. So it was kind of a nice gesture that really didn't. Did do anything, so, yes, we're fine with that.
As far as V O E, I'm fine with waiting to see if Mr. Anderson. I, like I said, just wait, see how that one rolls, but if he does find a replacement. Mr. Moco isn't due until next summer, and I want to wait on that. So I know he's willing to serve another term, but I don't want to decide that.
No, no, we're definitely waiting till this.
Get some closer to decide on whether or not a District Three person.
With redistricting, it might change. With redistricting, it might change.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes. That's true, cause I, I think that's gonna be the first area that.
Probably, I mean, we don't, we don't know. Maybe, Civil Service Commission?
That individual has indicated he is wanting to continue.
The only other one in the file is Teresa Kegel. But I'm sure Teresa, she was Dallas. From Dallas Park, she Dallas Park, so it's a commission, it's a, it's a District One seat in Civil Service Commission?
That's correct, sir.
And Teresa's District Two, so that answers me that.
You wanna, yeah.
Very good, Dick, reappoint. Uh, you got Planning Commission?
Yeah.
District One and District Two?
I am anticipating another application from the longstanding county resident that has expressed interest, I don't have the application yet.
So you wanna hold off on Planning Commission, gentlemen, so you guys made some more traces there? Senior Services, uh, District One, Shirley Baxter. I thought I was just talking to Sharon, I wish she had a District Three person. Somebody in District Two was stepping down.
Actually, that person that's just resigned is in District One, Grayson Bookmeyer. Usually your recommendations do come from your advisory board, I need to.
For that one especially.
Like I said, Sharon, Sharon was working on something. Veterans Advisory Board, Jerry Smith in District One, Cindy Furlong in District Three, we're both willing to serve another term, I'm fine with Cindy Furlong at number three.
Jerry, you'll stay on that?
He definitely said it.
Good, okay. I'm totally, cause I thought, oh god, that's another. Okay, yeah, no, I'm both, so those, those are two I'm both.
Seniors, seniors, planning, we're waiting for those two on planning. BOE. We're kind of waiting on Board of Health, if you guys are interested in.
The only opening in Board of Health that is coming due would be Position Number One, and she has submitted an application and she definitely is interested in reappointment. Do react, actually confirm it.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
Alright. That's a little different than Board of Equalization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a new application on Board of Health from John Bernmeister, who's a BO here in Golden Dell. That is my recommendation, not that I have anything wrong with Miss Sue, uh, but she's been on since two thousand seventeen. Both of the citizens are from the same area of the county, I think it'd be nice to spread it out a little bit. So that will be my recommendation.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at the application, I, I don't know the person also. Okay, any other board pending? Been shut off by pile up, Mr. Treasurer.
Board of Adjustments, sir, I forgot, you have the Board of Adjustments. Or renew.
Yeah. I don't know if Ken.
I am not assuming he will reapply, but I don't know.
Give him a chance and then. Well, or by default. I suspect he will want to be.
Alright, I think that's what we got going for now.
Yes.
Mr. Treasurer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So, uh, Finance Committee met on Friday, um, it was a. Pretty good meeting, we talked about, um, one of the things that we did discuss in the beginning while we were approving some of the minutes, we did talk about trying to. Post, Brenda was talking about posting, possibly posting the minutes on her, um, webpage. So she's gonna look into that, um, because we felt that that would be, cause I come without the minutes. Prove for the previous and not, they're from my notes and I'm not a good note taker, we are very.
No, we already.
And we are very lucky to have Brenda, Brenda takes very good notes.
Great.
Um, and so, uh, that is one thing that we're gonna look into is getting that set up possibly, or do something so we can post the minute, the approved minutes. So that they would be out there. So anyway, we had a discussion about that. We did talk about the debt schedule, but all we did was confirm that we were all on the same page, so we talked about the previous Tuesdays, so that was done. So I am actually updating the numbers and we'll get those to Jen, so she'll have those in her, her numbers. We rescheduled the November meeting, we had a conflict for the first meeting, or for the first meeting, the next meeting's on the Thursday of. Thanksgiving, um, we all.
That was Black Friday.
Black Friday, yes.
Which I was totally fine with.
So we rescheduled that to November twenty-second at, um, at nine AM. We had a, I, I was wanting to make sure that we followed up to the Blake decision. It sounds like that is just in the auditor's office, it sounds like that's something Brenda was dealing with. From an accounting perspective and doing some things, but it really didn't impact the Treasurer's office and it sounded like things were going, so we were just covering that. We did talk about, we had a budget, um, update or old business and talked about that. And we had talked about a handful of things, one of the things that came up was. When we had talked about reallocating or, um, changing the allocation for the fourth quarter. And taking off the two hundred fifty thousand to accumulate reserve, excuse me, and the three hundred thousand to. The radio payback, um, Dave brought up that there could be resolutions tied to those. So we are going back to see if we can find the resolutions and confirm where we believe we are so that we don't. That we have all of our eyes dotted and our teeth crossed.
Ordnance, I believe, for the payback.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, is that radio payback fund? Just meant for this and when this is done, the fund's gonna close, or are we gonna come up with the next project?
There's no fund, it's just an adds up portion, it's just a little piece of the one twenty-five.
Okay.
So it's not really a fund, it's just a, it's actually a spreadsheet, I think, says maybe Lee keeps track of this.
It's just a million bucks, it's earmarked, is there?
Correct. Yep. But we believe that there's a resolution that states that we have to do that, and what we wanna make sure is that we don't not follow our own resolutions or ordinances. Um, and that's the same.
Directs that we will do that three hundred thousand and the two fifty, and if we elected on with the fourth quarter. Payment to not make those allocations, we have to go clean that up, if there's some, we have to change the resolution. Or withdraw the resolution or whatever.
Or whatever.
Or whatever.
And the question was, one of them we thought was an ordinance, which would be way more difficult than a resolution. So we were going to.
So we didn't find an ordinance.
I gave you what I found.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So we found an ordinance.
No, I don't think it was an ordinance, I think all we found was, it was in the, well, we don't really know because it was in the budget when it was adopted. No, you gave me the, maybe not then.
No, it's.
Okay, then I, I guess I haven't seen it.
Okay.
Cause my worry, my recollection was it was an ordinance, the. The three hundred thousand to the radio payback.
Is an ordinance.
Is an ordinance, and so to not do it, you have to have a public hearing.
Well, that's kind of my question is, once, once we have the money set aside for that radio project. Is, there's no other radio.
No, I have not seen this.
The fund. Except future. Right.
This is the final payment also.
Yeah, this was the final.
Right, so that was kind of my question is, going forward next year, were we still putting money aside for that? Are we trying to figure out a different funding mechanism for that? It sounds like we are gonna continue to put. By ordinance.
No, I think the ordinance expires at this payment. And they get specified the length of term of the payment, well, I thought it did.
What's that?
I thought it said through twenty twenty-two.
That's what I thought, I thought there was some.
Starting in twenty thirteen, so it would be through twenty twenty-two, right?
For ten years.
Yeah, so it's ten.
What, what is that?
It's ordinance, yeah, I can just give you the copy.
Okay, but what's the ordinance number?
Zero four two nine one four.
Okay.
So we don't have the radio project payment in twenty twenty-three now. Unless we want to reenact some newer.
Right.
That was my.
But we already, last week with the, we, for budget, we said we're not making the three hundred thousand dollar payment. Into that reason, because of the shortfall in the fourth quarter. Not, I mean, compared to budget, not shortfall, and so to not, we can certainly do that, but we have to change. Cause we, uh, a former ordinance directs us to, and we can, we can change it, but we have, we have to clean that up.
Okay, so now that we found that, we will find this, and then we will, I will bring back the other one that I think is for the two fifty, which is resolution.
I think that's a resolution and that's, that's, that's a stroke of the pen.
So, we're still working through those. So we had a discussion about those two things and trying to get that. Uh, make sure that we don't do something that we have set up.
Right.
Already. We had some general discussions about unbudgeted revenues, um, and just trying to make sure that we were, you know, had gone through. Really nothing in depth, other than just kind of talking through some of that budget revenues that we had talked about the day before, making sure we were on the same page. And then the other thing that we did was we were discussing, or we had a conversation, I had asked about, um, buildings and grounds. That's in the general fund of whether with the buildings as in twenty twenty-three or four, whether there would be entrances in there. Because as the new buildings are new, do we have any additional maintenance or different things? And so we, that basically where that ended was, we were waiting, kind of like Jake had said at one point in time. Get into the new building, see how everything starts to flush out and then move on, and so that was kind of where that ended at. I think that was about what we covered for budgeting. Brenda did bring, and you guys have talked to Brenda earlier, um, we did have a short discussion on the time and attendance software. And there was nothing new to report on the Rescue America. And the next meeting will be eleven twenty-two at nine AM.
So. That's the inside your head.
I'm still learning. We, um, we did have a, in the Treasurer's Office, some information about the Treasurer's Office. Public Works, uh, installed a Dropbox in our wall, so that you can put things into the office, we don't have the paperwork set up there. So we're hoping to try to get that put up today or tomorrow, so that we will be able to get, um, tax payments and everything, we wanna get it here. We're hoping for today, but would probably be.
I'll try it on Thursday.
Yeah, you can't, so if we're closed, um, because we don't open till nine to the public, we're in balancing, doing other things until nine. Um, and we start closing our tells at four thirty, but people can, if they're in the hallway or have access to the building, can put an envelope into the Dropbox. Um, in addition to, as you remember, technically per the new, uh, COVID rules or L and I or whatever. When people come into the office, um, the staff is required because we're a public area, we have, don't have a separate wall. So hopefully, we'll be able to get people to just drop stuff in the Dropbox, that way their my staff will have to put their mask on and off, and it'll make it a pleasurable place to work. So shout out to Public Works, they got that put in last week and, uh, it's, it, I think it's gonna work out, and it's gonna be great, I think it is gonna be very good. Um, as, this is our main focus right now is collection of the second half taxes, it's the twenty fifth, we posted through yesterday. Yesterday, we posted CoreLogic, which is our largest, um, uh, taxing service. Um, and we are about eighty-five percent completed, so we're always a day or two behind again. Second half collections, I've always said, they're kind of a crazy time, cause they, it happens all in a two week period of time. We rarely, the mail just started going up about the fifteenth, and now it'll go be steady crazy all the way till. Um, and taxes are due November first this year, because the thirty-first is a Sunday. So we will have revenue, all of our revenue, we'll have two days of tax, pretty good tax payments and posts, I would think into November. So, but we're on track eighty-five percent, I think that's a good number, that in the terms of the general fund is about seven hundred and forty-two thousand. And that is on an estimate of seven point. Oh, I can't remember the number, but up about what we budgeted for twenty twenty-two. So I'm, I'm kind of watching that number to kind of see that we kind of have a good, good.
We got a good number.
Good number, yeah, exactly. Um, we have set a date for the surplus auction, which is December first through the sixth, that will be on, um, public surplus is the name of the entity. We have, are working with Lee to get a plan on going through the rest of it, this is our first time of doing it online, so we will work on that part of it. And we're. Probably we're doing some of it, but this week's gonna be a little crazy, we'll probably get all of our work done on the, um. Starting in November, yes, sir.
Um, I'm reading our documents and it says sealed bid auction. Is this gonna be sealed bid online, or are people gonna be able to like eBay the thing?
Well, which documents are you reading?
I don't know, was on our consent agenda for surplus items, I thought it said sealed bid.
It was setting the hearing date.
Gotcha.
And I thought it said sealed.
That is how we used to do it.
Right.
And that is probably my fault, and I probably didn't, so we.
Need a little wider.
No, we, this will be a full-on auction auction, so it'll be just like the same format, it will be, they will bid, it will get to the very end. It will stay open, if somebody keeps bidding every thirty, I think it's thirty seconds or a minute, I can't remember how it works. Just like what I think we're all familiar with as being an online auction. And so you'll be able to see that, you know, Suzie Q is bidding against you or however it works, and you'll be able to see how it all goes. So that could be, that, that, that's probably on me, because I prob, I mean, I've talked about changing this, but I haven't even think about it being at least.
I changed it in some places, that's.
And that's okay, that's okay. No, it's not, it's a tough one, cause that, and this will be the first time that we're gonna do it, and, and I talked to, um, my staff. And I'm like, if we could just get some of this stuff going and get a platform for this, I think it's gonna go well.
And then, um, same questions on auction, are you gonna have, uh, better? Identification of items, cause it's like the, the sheriff federal ammunition twelve gauge pellets. I mean, if it's size seven birdshot, it's dirt cheap, if it's double lock buck, it's a buck around.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm assuming.
Our plan is to have pictures of all of this stuff and do as much pictures and everything as we can. Videos don't really work as well, what they've said, and this is just kind of been talking to the folks that have done these in the past. Unless it's, yes, um, you know, we've got some vehicles that don't have keys. But I don't really know that our prices have been that great with the sealed bid in the past, so I really don't know that it's gonna be. I, I mean, we've been really watching, um, Kidda Task just had some, just did the same thing through their auction. So we're, we're gonna have to do pictures, we're gonna have to have a better, and I think we're gonna have to work going forward, trying to get the. Departments when they're surplusing things to give us a little bit better description of, okay, is the transmission, what, why are you? If you're just surplusing it, cause it gets to the end, great, is there anything known that you know, if, if you know that the transmission's slipping, then let's just write it in there. I mean, it, it just makes sense.
Well, and it will drive the prices up of the other ones, cause you just disclosed this one.
Sure.
This one must not have a transmission slipping, or you don't think.
Which, yeah, exactly.
Drives up the price of the other ones, and my, my other thing was like if, uh, you know, all these shotgun shells, if it's all in one lot. You've got three people that might bid on it if it's in two lots, like all that bulk, um, ammo casing. All that brass, five hundred pounds of brass, if that's all in.
I don't think we were gonna do it in one lot, we hadn't.
If you break it up by caliber, you've got more bidders.
But we probably are not gonna break it up a hundred percent by caliber, because I think we're gonna find some calibers are good. We're gonna probably have the main calibers, and then we're probably gonna have some missile, I mean, cause I'm not gonna think you're, you're gonna have some that you're gonna have a lot less. Pieces of, but I guess having another lot, we, we'll have to get there, we haven't done it this way, we haven't actioned off that kind of stuff before. Pieces of, but I guess having another lot, we, we'll have to get there. We haven't done it this way. We haven't actioned off that kind of stuff before. So, you know, usually with the vehicles, they're a lot. Usually, you know, we have have tractors, all kinds of stuff like that. So. Um, desks and things, we have taken desks and chairs and tried to make a happy palette that somebody can. Kind of.
I'll take your.
Do us. Exactly. So what are we going to?
Too worried about desk and chairs and bookshelves because you're going to make five bucks. I'm looking at the brass and it, you know, I know one buyer, but if you separate them. You know, and you show a hundred and seventy five pounds of nine millimeter, now this guy's interested. Where I'm not interested, no, the three thirty eight Lapola garbage stuff. Yeah, there. So I think you drive up more bidding. Um, by having those calibers separated. If that gets a better price for the taxpayer, so that'd be my recommendation to do it. I was just curious how you're doing.
Yeah, we haven't really gotten to that point yet. But pictures, we're going to try to do a lot of pictures.
There you go. I thought my mask covered really.
Go to die.
Yeah.
Greg, I don't see you in the, that the resolution says sealed bid. So it might have been on my agenda covered.
Yeah, I did, because I, I, I think I did.
I saw it somewhere and I was kind of surprised because I knew you were doing.
It's, and so, I mean, because we're doing some of that with ours and trying to go through everything and change it and look at, see where everything's at. And it, it happens trying to update those, so. But yes, no, it will be a full on public surplus. And if you wanted to go look at other auctions, it's public surplus dot com is the. Is the webpage and then you just put in so many miles from your house and or whatever you want. I usually do two hundred miles. That pulls up. Like Kidde Task was on there the other day, so we looked at some of their stuff and they've been using that platform for quite a while.
And I'm assuming you're going to have a heck of a marketing campaign with it in the paper, a little radio ads.
We're gonna, you know, I mean, we're really trying to cut back. On the expenses side, that's the problem. I mean, we're trying to cut our budget. So I mean, that's some of the things that we have done in the past. Those would come out of our general budget, so we are trying to balance this out with. Where we're, because we run a lot of, in the past have run a lot of ads, like we didn't do it this year. We didn't run an ad in the paper, in the Sentinel, which we have done usually in the past. Because we're trying to kind of cut back on our expenses, we did run about six ads on the radio. Specifically kind of targeting the fourteen hundred talk show thing a couple of times, trying to do that to see if we, where we're at. So we, we'll see. I mean, you know, but ads are expensive and that's the.
We, I mean, I'll.
But no, no, we definitely want to try to promote.
Everywhere else.
And we will love to spend thirty minutes of a radio interview telling you about every different caliber.
Yeah, we will. We have pre thirty minute. You have three thirty minute commercials.
We could do that.
Okay, so we could do that. That is, that is actually not a bad idea. I will write that down.
No, I'm already practicing. I don't know about that, Julian, but you know.
Brand marketing.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Because we could probably make it happen.
Yeah. But we are using radio a little bit more than we have in the past. Um, and I think we didn't use it with surplus sale and I do think it was effective. Um, and we could kind of target some specific times of the day. And I think we got a little bit broader, um, a group. But we did kind of more the Y one oh two one and it seemed that it worked out fairly well. But, you know, there's good listeners at fourteen hundred about eight o'clock in the morning, so we throw a few ads.
I just wish we could.
There's listeners, taxpayers.
I, I, I wish we could, uh, make the brass. National advertising.
Well, they do, um, public surplus is a website that's, you know, they, they can, and I can ask them about.
You're going to get, you're going to get.
Yeah, what's the value?
Honestly.
That five hundred percent of brass.
Quite brand easy.
Usually a sale when we do our sales.
I mean, I can say a better number on Thursday when I do that.
Yeah, because I.
Because I haven't got the map yet.
It's ten dollars a pound for brass.
Oh, easy. Oh, absolutely. It's, uh, you, you pay. Uh, nine millimeter ammo, you're probably a hundred, hundred. I mean, we can find it. Granted, you can't find it right now, so top tables, find a man. A box of nine millimeter brass this big. Two, two, three ammo, way more than, I mean, brass is, you can't find brass or drive into New Mexico. To pick branch brass up at a range and pay full price. That you, you're going to, you're going to see this money. No shotgun shells or buck around. If you advertise correctly, if it's but double up buck or slugs, buck around these. So right there's ten grand.
Anything else? I am a little worried about, just as a comment on that, I am a little worried with the shells and I'm reaching out to some other treasurers to find out if they've ever. Sold those to make sure what kind of criteria we have to have or paperwork and all the other things, because usually we just sell cars and.
There it is.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we have a title. I mean, it's not like it can't be done. I'm just wanting to make sure.
Off our lot before.
Don't our eyes. The risk assessment. Yeah, or put it on a trailer.
Put it on a trailer.
Pick it up where it sits. And that's really it. The most, like I say, mostly this is just tax collection week and, uh. Started last week and it will finish and will be pretty busy through Friday, so. Get in, pay your taxes. I think it so far is looking pretty good. We have all the, all the, uh. Mortgage companies in, so.
One thing I was thinking about is, um. For some of these older cars, um, at the, uh, Dallas airport, it might be a good idea if we donate that to the city or. Or the county runs it, but most, most small airports have courtesy cars that come from the counties or the cities or whoever manages it. And so if we have a good operating, running one, that, that wouldn't be.
That we're going to get five hundred dollars for.
Yeah, that we're going to get five hundred dollars for that, that would bring in people that are flying in to go buy.
We have a glass surplus auction for something else. We had one that had no mild on it, but. There might be one on this one too. So would they, sorry, would they then purchase it for a year? We would just don't, we would just get, they would buy it for a buck or something.
We would surplus it.
No, 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 no. I want to add it here. It could be on no payroll.
Well, I mean, it would either. It would either go like, in a lot of instances, the counties keep them and then, you know, they do an annual on the thing once a, once a year or whatever. It just sits out there and it's keys, you know, the city is providing one out to the airport out here that got one. And I don't think we have any down in, at Dallasport, but.
So were you just thinking Dallasport or are you thinking donating one there? Because that depends on me whether it taken off our rolls or not. If it's up here, I don't want it on our.
Right, but down there that we all have.
That's a little different, but I also don't want to pay maintenance down there with a brace thrown in the garbage. I'll give you that one.
We have a sale every year.
Yeah.
Parking these at the fairgrounds.
Parked at the airport.
They just leave the keys on them.
We can get them a bus for crying out loud.
I don't think we want to.
For the big ones.
A big one.
Yeah.
For the big.
Yeah.
Again, I just don't want to be in charge of insurance and maintenance.
What are you thinking? I can see you turning.
Me?
No.
Didn't they used to have one at the Dallas? They had one for years since the war out at the airport?
No, I think that was provided by the, the, uh, FBO.
The FBO.
Oh, yeah. And then the FBO's changed.
It's a big deal at an airport to have it available.
Yeah, yeah.
Said, I don't mind donating. I just don't want to be the hook for wearing.
Well, and I know like fire districts, a lot of times they'll, they'll, you know, they have a rig, like a bigger fire district will surplus it and the other fire district pays ten dollars or something like that. You know, I mean, and, and it's because it's still for the betterment of the public or however, you know, it's kind of doing it for the citizens. So. That's another way to do it and it could still come off of ours and, you know, we could give it to, or, you know, get it to the. Airport consortium or whatever that group is called. But yes, we can look at that. I can look through the list and see, I was thinking that there's one on this list. I haven't really dug into this list too extensively.
If you find a good car.
Seems like there's one.
I'll talk with Jeff and see what.
Yeah, I don't care if it's.
It's not, I, you're Jeff.
Jeff from the air, Jeff from the airport.
Oh, okay, okay. Because I was going to say, I don't think it's a public works vehicle. I think there's, you're usually pretty well, pretty well. That's true. Yeah.
You know.
I don't want to give.
Oh, airport.
Right. Yes, okay. I will put that on there.
Something that runs this not of much value.
And the other thing that we have done and we did the last time, um, is we have a list that we do, we do invite the scrappers. We send it. There's three or four scrapper people that are in the county. Um, and we, because we don't have minimum bids, so, um, we just want them to bid something. So as long as everything gets a bid. Then at least it goes through the process. Otherwise, then we got to set up another process if it doesn't sell to kind of get rid of it and so on and so forth. So. We just try to encourage the folks that are out there that are, even if they want to scrap the cars to. Put my dollar bid on everything and.
I know that, uh, Fire District Three right now is looking for three cars that have tires that are not operating. You know, they do their training on them and stuff and put titles. So that's another option, like something doesn't fit or something.
Gotcha, but it doesn't need to run?
No, they're going to burn them.
Okay.
Yeah.
They could get them.
There's rigs without keys that would be.
They would cut you out. If there's some without keys that we could probably.
Perfect. That would be perfect. You don't need keys to burn them.
No.
But you can't hotwire a car.
I'm a little. These are old police cruisers, I think. So, okay.
When I go to my house in Borneo.
Borneo, that's what it was. They couldn't think of the name.
I will, I will.
That's all I have. You guys have any other questions?
No. Not that I should. Oh, so many.
I still want to know what Jim was thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Treasure.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right. One more board pending. I just thought of the.
Greg.
I'm not seeing Q online.
I'm, I don't think he, he's out of town. Thank you, sir.
I tried to be really respectful. Okay. Yeah, that's what I said. That's. He didn't answer one text, which he shouldn't. Just checking.
Mr. Gertie reached out and was questioning whether we wanted a plaque on the building to dedicate the building. Like you would normally do for other things.
Oh.
And, uh, originally I told him, I don't know, you would have to ask each individual if, that I wasn't a big fan. My name on it anyway. But. Everything we do around here does have plaque. Even your little Liberty Bell at the fairgrounds and, and it's. So. I'm open. I don't care either way. Think about it. Uh, maybe we're going up with Cory on Thursday and talk about it, but we give you a couple of days to ponder the.
It's a dedication and a tradition.
I don't really want my name on the building, but it's dedicated to the tradition. It is, I don't want to be the, uh. Angry butt head all the time.
Yeah.
So.
Was that a, yeah, you don't want him to be the angry butt head? I'm not commenting on that. That's an inside my head comment. My, no, that was, I, I think it, you need to put a dedication on it. I don't really care, but.
As I said, I'm, I'm kind of, I don't want to break it.
A tradition.
Because of opinion, so I, I wanted to bring it up to you guys. Let him know Thursday and.
You'll let him know Thursday, but I. I don't know, we should put Rob's name on it too, yeah. Anybody that wants.
How about to the citizens of. That's exactly what I was thinking too. Exactly. And I almost said.
That's actually, you know.
Well, is that what it says in the Pioneer Center? It's dedicated to the.
Oh, I have no idea.
Three commissioners. I think it does say something like that.
That's not why I was.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I've got. An email where I had, uh, communicated with prosecutor and Rebecca. This is about the code compliance. It went through the public process when the public. Why I keep calling her public, the building director separated code compliance out of Title fifteen.
Right.
And that's an ordinance that passed. And the only thing that needed to do. Was get a, have a number assigned.
Right.
Number was assigned and you guys signed it again. And it went up to go with the original.
Okay.
But that's the old one, not the one we were.
Right, it's just the.
That's what we have.
It's the original.
It's the original one, just retired.
Ten years.
Right. It is. It is currently in title, in code.
Twenty four.
We just have.
Title twenty four.
Title twenty four.
But we just have a moratorium still that's in.
Right.
Then we might need.
Or was it a moratorium or was it something else called something else?
I think you definitely need to consider adding some teeth and changing some things. Definitely.
Well, as I told them, look at it, look at the signage, give us your opinion. You're going to be in charge of helping us fix it. So, uh, you're supposed to be looking over this. But I agree, a fifty dollar fine for something isn't going to stop you from holding weddings on my property. I'll take your fifty dollar fine. Oh, you're doing a lot of short term rentals. Give me the fifty dollar fine.
Okay, prosecuting attorney, I don't believe Mr. Canal is online. I believe he's out of town. Make sure. I don't see him on. I want Dave to get Pat Arnold content. I don't know that he's physically out of town. Did Pat Arnold contact you about this ten years on the damn thing?
Yes.
Are you going to attend now? I guess it's my turn then. I went to the last.
Ten years.
Ten years ago. No. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
We're both going to be there.
At least you were notified.
You can go if you want.
It's kind of nice being on the outside looking in.
Anything else? No, I'll keep it to my head like you.
Yep.
Uh, if not, then I'm, I wish.
It's on my list right here.
Okay.
I brought it up last week. Do you guys have any interest in possibly getting ahead of the rapid cover test? Inventory that we might need in this county and that if we don't ask, we can find ourselves going whoops. And have no way to test people that we might need to test in two weeks.
We should, uh, ask, um, your Aaron to look into that. I know. From my conversation that, you know, I guess KVH is not having issues with their testing supplies, but.
I've heard from people that they can't even get an appointment for two days.
So, so one of, I thought it was KVH is better off from the last update and then like Skyline and, um, North Shore are really tight.
Great, but they don't do rapid stuff that's sent off to the lab. So we have rapid fifteen minute tests in the jail. Swab your nose fifteen minutes. We'll tell you if we had it or not. If we potentially might have to check employees on them when they morning. Or Aaron might have to check employees on them Monday morning. Uh, it would be nice to know at fifteen minutes, about two days after he gets back from the lab. That's my thing.
Well, I can tell you whenever you, your kid has the sniffles, it takes about a week and a half before you, uh, get to send them back to school, it seems.
Well, and I'm just saying if we have them and don't need them, we can give them to the jail that uses them with every inmate that comes to the door.
I would say. So. Want to talk to Aaron about it?
Doesn't hurt to have some if the board is interested in pursuing that. Rather than being cut off guard, cut fifteen employees that can't work this week.
Yes.
Never mind. Keep it in your hand.
Public health can't do occupational health, so whether they can buy them. The funds probably couldn't come out.
I, I wasn't the one that said public health. I.
But I talked to her. She can't do occupational.
So who would do it though? If we, if the county buys.
Friend of the son wanted to do your drug test.
Yeah, I would agree.
Oh, I guess you get to look it up then.
Yeah, go see what you can do. See if there's any availability.
I didn't want to say.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Wow.
But she did say that she could, wouldn't, either couldn't or could, wouldn't be allowed.
Well, there is a difference between.
There is a big difference.
Couldn't and won't.
Well, that's why, that's why. We're going to have the choice to potentially do it here or wait two days. Every Monday for people's test to come back from the state level.
If that's allowed.
One album ass.
Do you, uh, have any good news for our occupational health?
In terms of that subject?
No, it hasn't been released yet.
I'm at any of the subjects. Just give us some good news. Were we adjourned?
So, yes, I would like.
We'll be ready when, we need to be ready.
Yeah, I, I would like, uh, pricing and availability for a decision on. Next Tuesday, sir. Because when that number comes down from the Fed, we're, we're not going to have limited time to make an order. If not, too late by then.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Have a second.
Motion a second to adjourn until nine o'clock on Thursday for scheduled workshops. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We are adjourned for.
Absolutely.
Are you still uploading these?
So people that are not open and in.